From the time we quit the regular agenda till just after one o'clock today. Uh, I think it was, yeah. Uh, so that's, that's why we're a little, we're five minutes late starting today. So we're now on, um, the last item of the non-consent agenda. This item deals with the Tahoe Western asphalt issue. Uh, Hope, you want to start us off on this, please?
Certainly. Um, do we have Jeremy Clark with us, does he?
Yes, Jeremy's here.
The appellant, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure the appellant was in the room. Um, per the municipal code eighteen, well, first I want to talk about the location of this facility. Um, Tamara, can I have my PowerPoint up on the screen? What you'll see outlined in blue is the subject property. Yellow is the county line. So you can see how close the subject property is to the county line. It's just south of the county line, east of, um, on the east side of Highway fifty. Per the municipal code eighteen oh two oh six oh, the appellant is appealing the February twenty-six, twenty twenty decision of the Planning Commission concerning its amendment to the conditions of approval related to a special use permit for an asphalt plant and aggregate crushing facility. Specifically, the applicant is requesting six separate items. One, the removal of the November twentieth, two thousand nineteen condition regarding the regenerative thermal oxidizer. Two, the re- to remove the requirement that odors are not detectable beyond the property line, and the appellant has provided alternative language. Um, three, to remove the requirement for code enforcement monitoring. Four, to find that EcoSorb is effective in mitigating odor. Five, to remove the requirement for lighting specification at the time of building permit application. And six, to allow the facility to operate at night and on Sundays up to thirty times per calendar year. I will be speaking to each of these six items, but before I do, I just want to review some background. Um, on January twenty-six, two thousand eleven, I keep talking about things that happened a long time ago. I had that this morning with Silver Oak, too. So in two thousand eleven, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit for an asphalt plant and an aggregate crushing facility on the subject property. In July nine, two thousand sixteen, the asphalt plant began its operation. So although it received its entitlement in two thousand eleven, the rock crushing did commence within one year of that approval. The asphalt plant, part of that special use permit, did not commence until two thousand sixteen. In October two thousand eighteen, the Planning Commission considered an amendment to the special use permit to expand the hours of operation. This approval included a requirement to use EcoSorb to address the odors in a one-year review of the special use permit. In November two thousand nineteen, the Planning Comm- Commission conducted its one-year review and modified the conditions of approval, changing the requirement for EcoSorb to a requirement for regenerative thermal oxidizer. That decision was appealed to the board. On February sixth, twenty twenty, the board, you conducted your public hearing, but you referred the item back to the Planning Commission based on new information. On February twenty-six, twenty seven, twenty twenty, the Planning Commission remove, they conducted a public hearing, and they removed the requirement for the regenerative thermal oxidizer and created a performance standard that the operation of the facility shall require that odors are not detectable beyond the property line. They also modified the hours of operation to eliminate the ability to work nights or Sundays up to thirty times per year and added a condition regarding code enforcement monitoring. This decision of the Planning Commission is what's being considered today. So it's a combination of their November decision, which was appealed to you, and the February twenty-six, twenty twenty decision. Um, before I get into the, the six items that they're appealing, I just want to talk in general about what a special use is, because I think it's kind of good to go back to basics sometimes. The municipal code defines a special use permit as a specific discretionary approval for use that has been determined to have unique circumstances, to be more intense, or to have potentially greater impact than permitted uses within the same district. So what does that mean? So I always say, when we talk about zoning, we talk about how you're allowed to use your land. You have three options. It's a yes or no or a maybe. Can you build a house in a residential zoning district? That's a yes. It's called a ministerial review. You meet objective criteria, you get to build. Objective criteria is things like setbacks, building heights, building code, fire code. You have nos. Can you build an industrial use in a residential zoning district? No, you can't. There's really nothing to talk about. It's just a no. And then you have your maybes. Can I build an asphalt plant in a general industrial zoning district? That didn't get a yes. That's not objective. It's not a ministerial review. That is a conditional use. It's a maybe. It's a discretionary review. Only the Planning Commission can issue a special use permit. The staff cannot do that. And the Planning Commission may only approve the special use permit upon making each of the seven required findings in the affirmative. These findings are not objective measures. I know everyone's looking for objective measures. Those objective measures are when we do the ministerial stuff, not when you do your discretionary stuff. Um, I was telling Supervisor Bagwell that one of the commissioners, when we kind of went through the findings when he was initially appointed, he said, but wait, this is really subjective. That's true. It is subjective. Your planning commission is a cross-section of the community. And so when that cross-section of the community applies its judgment to these findings of fact, the seven findings of fact, that's how these discretionary reviews occur. The finding that the Planning Commission has been primarily focused on is finding, finding B, which states, and again, the commission, the commission has to make seven required findings of fact in the affirmative, this is the finding of fact that the commission, that I want to focus on today, and I think the commission has been focused on, that the use will not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties, or the general neighborhood, and is compatible with and preserves the character and integrity of adjacent development and neighborhoods, or includes improvements or modifications either onsite or within the public right of way to mitigate development related to adverse impacts such as noise, vibration, fumes, odors, dust, glare, or physical activities. So when we consider those discretionary uses, and they're called conditional uses in the code, those uses can have impacts, that those things are in the allowed use, the ministerial things don't have. So those ministerial things, we kind of can predict what their impacts are. They're not really going to be troublesome. So they just get to build. These ones, these can have impacts. It could be traffic impacts, which is a different finding, but they could have impacts such as noise, vibration, odor. So some people might say, well, wait, this is an industrial area. This is absolutely should be approved. It's not an allowed use. It's a conditional use. So we need to look at our findings. In considering the annual review of the special use permit at its meeting of February twenty-six, twenty twenty, the Planning Commission voted seven oh to modify the conditions of approval relative to operation, hours of operation, and odors. Also, in considering the annual review of the special use permits meeting of November nineteenth, the Planning Commission voted seven oh to modify the conditions relative to hours of operation and methods of suppression. So neither of those votes was a split vote. Both of those votes were seven oh votes. I will now go through each of the six items. The regenerative thermal oxidizer, that was the appeal that initially came in based on the February twenty-six action. At its meeting of February twenty-six, the Planning Commission removed this requirement. So this issue is moved. In terms of removing condition seventeen, that the odors not be detectable beyond the property line, I was really surprised this morning not to hear public comment. The Planning Commission has conducted three public hearings relatively recently on this, October two thousand eighteen, November two thousand nineteen, and February twenty-six, twenty twenty. They have heard a lot of public comment. They've heard a lot of emotion in that public comment. They've received petitions. They've received letters. You have their meeting minutes. You have their, those petitions. You have those letters. Odors has constantly come up. And I want to be very clear, we are not discussing air quality. We have never discussed air quality at the Planning Commission. This has always been about finding B. And I have that on the board still, and finding B clearly calls out odors. The Planning Commission did not make up any solutions. There are allegations that the Planning Commission is trying to put this business out of business. That's not true. These solutions came up in conversations with Eric Florio, an air quality specialist in the Business Environmental Program at UNR, and conversations with staff at NDEP, Bureau of Air Pollution Control, who have more experience in working with asphalt plants. So no one just made up EcoSorb. Nobody just made up a regenerative thermal oxidizer. We went out and we tried to find solutions, objective solutions. Having said that, the February meeting, the Planning Commission realized they have no interest in designing an asphalt plant. They have no interest in directing a business owner how to operate his business beyond looking at the impacts necessary for the findings of fact. They were looking for a performance standard. And a lot of you have asked, well, is there an objective performance standard out there? NDEP does have a objective performance standard. What they do is they use what's called a nasal ranger. They get one part odorous air, eight parts clean air or fresh air, non-odorous. They mix it in this nasal ranger. Then they smell it. They then wait for fifteen minutes. They do the exact same recipe, one part odorous air, eight parts non-odorous air, mix it in the nasal ranger, smell again. If, and they need that fifteen-minute gap, the two smells have to occur within a one-hour period. If, when they pursue that, they smell it twice, there's a violation. And talking to NDEP's enforcement agent, he has never cited anybody based on odors. I would say that based on the public comment I've seen, either through letters, through phone calls, through public testimony, NDEP has a very high bar that doesn't necessarily capture objectionable odors. So the Planning Commission, and I offer that to you because I know a lot of folks have said, well, isn't this NDEP's job? And again, NDEP's job is air quality. We're talking about finding B, specifically odors. So the Planning Commission, in looking for a performance standard, did not address how the plant would be designed, did not address what additives might be put into the mixture. Instead, they said the operation of the facility shall require that odors not be detectable beyond the property line. Do what you want on your property, but don't have it come off the property. This is not the first time the Planning Commission has addressed odors. In the memo I wrote to this board, I cited a number of special use permits for marijuana, where there is a condition of approval specific to odors. Um, the city manager asked me if I had other examples. Truthfully, I can't think of other examples in the city where it creates objectionable smells. Um, if I could think of that, I would go pull their permit. I just can't think of one. The marijuana condition states that facilities must be maintained at all times to prevent offensive odor discharge from the building that could impact surrounding properties. In the supplemental materials, the appellant is requesting that condition seventeen regarding the odors not crossing property lines essentially be modified to state that Tahoe Western Asphalt shall comply with the conditions of its air quality permit as required by the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection when practicable. TWA, Tahoe Western Asphalt, shall further use commercially available equipment for purposes of odor mitigation. Note, this request to change language did not come up at the Planning Commission meeting. Also, I would point out that there's currently a condition, I believe it's condition nine, I think, that the applicant shall comply with applicable requirements of NDEP Bureau of Air Pollution Control air quality operating permit during days and hours of operation. The applicant shall also comply with all applicable requirements for noise, odors, erosion, air pollution, and dust control. So we already have a condition of approval that addresses compliance with NDEP requirements. Number three, the removal of the request for code enforcement monitoring. Condition of approval eighteen states the Planning Commission will conduct another public hearing on the subject SUP in October twenty twenty. At every public hearing, the Planning Commission receives comments on odors. And I've already explained that. They've conducted three public hearings since two thousand eighteen. Every single time, they hear about odors. Condition of approval nineteen discusses code enforcement monitoring to help determine compliance with condition of approval seventeen, as well as to create an objective data set for when the special use permit comes back before the Planning Commission in twenty twenty. Number four talks about a finding that EcoSorb is effective in mitigating odors. The Planning Commission action does not address the efficacy of EcoSorb. Rather, the Planning Commission, I've said this, I think, about four times already, focused on performance standards. They had no interest in addressing how to operate the plant. That's why the requirement for EcoSorb was removed and is not reinserted, because the Planning Commission's not concerned with how this business operates, with the exception of, while they have a lot of concerns, but in terms of odor, they're not dictating how it operates. They're saying, you can operate how you see fit to make your product, just keep your odor on site. Number five is the removal of the requirement for lighting specification at the time of building permit application. Condition of approval eight requires details of a proposed lighting standard must be submitted at the time of building permit. This condition has existed since the original SUP in two thousand eleven. This condition means that if he seeks a building permit for exterior lighting, he submits a specification so the staff can look at it and ensure it's in compliance with the, with the city's require, lighting requirements. Um, the removal of this condition did not come up at the Planning Commission meeting. Number six talks about allowing the facility to operate at night and on Sundays up to sixty times per calendar year. In October two thousand eighteen, the Planning Commission amended the special use permit to allow the applicant to work at nights and on Sundays up to thirty times in a calendar year. In November two thousand nineteen, the Planning Commission heard public comments indicating a lack of compliance with the hours of operation. At that meeting, the Planning Commission voted seven oh to remove the allowance to work at night and on Sundays up to thirty times per calendar year. The applicant may work Monday through Saturday from six AM to six PM, with equipment start-up between five thirty AM and six AM, which represents an expansion over the two thousand eleven hours of operation of seven AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday. Um, I'm happy to take questions, but before I do, I do want to, I want to turn it over to Ben Johnson from our DA's office, who has some comments. And the appellant's attorney, Jeremy Clark, is with us today, virtually. Thank you.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. This is Ben Johnson, Attorney. Hi, Ben.
Um, so I want to start with some preliminary issues. The first is the standard that you use when determining this appeal. As you know from past appeals, you're not conducting a de novo review. Uh, you're conducting, uh, to determine whether there was substantial evidence to support the Planning Commission's findings. Um, and after reviewing that, I'm hopeful you will agree that there is sufficient evidence, substantial evidence, to support the findings that were made by the Planning Commission. Um, the second issue is whether or not the board even has authority. There was suggestion in the letter from the appellant that because all of the complaints are allegedly coming only from Lion County residents, that the board doesn't have authority to hear the case, that you need a Carson City resident in order to do anything. And that's simply not correct. Um, as Hope mentioned, this is a conditional use, and in order to make, or in order to have a conditional use, you have to make the findings that are stated in the code. One of those findings has to do with odor. So essentially, what the appellant would want you to believe is that, um, you don't have authority to hear this case. And that really puts both counties in an untenable position, where Lion County is telling its residents, this is a business, the city, we don't have authority over it. But then the appellant wants you to, you don't have any authority over it because people complaining are from Lion County. So really, that would leave them without any authority or any, um, kind of supervisory, you know, whatsoever. And that's simply not true. Because it's a Carson City, because the code says they have to meet these findings in order for the conditional use to exist. You certainly do have authority to hear the issue. Um, going to the issues on appeal, I think odor is the one that everyone's the most concerned with. It was certainly the issue that was most heavily discussed by the Planning Commission, by the members of the public. Um, and I've done some research in order to support and defend the decision of the Planning Commission. As Hope mentioned, this isn't an issue about air. The Planning Commission doesn't, the Board of Supervisors doesn't control air quality. That's up to the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection. Issue of odor is completely different. Um, as Hope mentioned, um, standards for environmental protection and clean air are a lot higher than they would be for an odor issue. Um, so you really need to separate that in your mind. You know, we're not looking at what the air quality is and whether or not TWA is following their air quality permit from the NDEP. We're looking at whether or not this issue was having an impact on the properties under condition, um, five. So one of the points that TWA makes is that this is an industrial use. Um, it's in an industrial zoned area, and there are no plants in the country that don't smell. Uh, that may be true, but that doesn't mean that the analysis ends there. There's case law that has support for, uh, just because it's an allowed use, doesn't mean that, um, it's free from any conditions or requirements regarding a nuisance or odor. Um, I found case law where it was an asphalt plant, it was on the area, and the court upheld, um, findings against the plant because it was creating an odor nuisance to the surrounding community. Um, next, I think the argument that the condition that placed, um, placed by the Planning Commission, the odor not leave the property line is too vague or ambiguous. Um, but in my research, I, again, I have found case law that supports, um, a condition that odor should not leave the property line. The city of Reno has in its code, an ordinance that says that no use shall be permitted in any zoning district in such a manner that odors, um, occur in such quantity and volume so as to produce a nuisance or hazard beyond the property line. I've also found ones that was in other cities across the country, such as Nashville, that again, have, um, restrictions against allowing odors to permeate beyond your property line in a way that impacts the health and safety of the neighboring community. So it's not without support, um, the decision that was made by the Planning Commission. I understand that it may be hard to control the odor from leaving the property. But that doesn't mean that it's vague and ambiguous. There are cases that say that this is enforceable. I don't think that you should take the position of any authority to control smell, that it's always going to exist so that we just ignore it. Um, it's a complicated issue because you're asking, probably asking yourself, why is this the top of the NDEP? And as I've already explained, their standards are very high. So based on the evidence presented to the Planning Commission, you know, the testimony from the residents that are dealing with this issue, kind of open their windows, um, having health issues because of that, you know, I encourage the board to make a defining that doesn't nullify the condition that odors can't emanate from the property. Um, it's not up to the planning, or the Board of Supervisors, or even the complaining members of the community to determine how to solve this problem. The problem has been identified, and now it's up to the appellant to come up with a solution. So I submit to you that there are certain decisions that have addressed similar problems, um, similar situations, and have upheld similar conditions without finding it to be unconstitutionally vague. Um, I even found one court case that, you know, the objective standard is the reasonable person's standard. This is the same kind of standard that you would use in a negligence case or in a nuisance action. You find what would a reasonable person, um, find? Um, and so, you know, the same kind of idea comes, it's not purely subjective whether or not there's a smell. Um, I think that, I also wanted to point out that the appeal has quoted some mischaracterized statements that were made by Commissioner Wiggins. Um, you know, the planning commission felt there should be monitoring, and Commissioner Wiggins said he believes that a third party like staff should be, um, relied on to supply that information to the board. Um, he didn't think that, um, you know, the plant should be shut down. The Planning Commission doesn't have an agenda. They're not out to get TWA. They're trying to address the concerns of the members of the community who have come forward. Um, Commissioner Perry even commented during the last Planning Commission meeting that he doesn't want to see the pump, the company and its employees go out of business. Um, and he suggested working with TWA, trying to find a new location for the plant. Declaring the board cannot regulate odor would essentially render this code, um, this condition of the special use permit, um, meaningless. Um, they also made the claim that they're being treated differently than similarly situated people in the community. Um, they mentioned, you know, what about odors from barbecue or somebody burning trash, you know, coming into property? That's not the same thing. We're not talking about somebody having a barbecue in their backyard in the residential neighborhood. We're talking about an industrial operation where noxious odors are emanating onto neighboring properties. Um, you know, think of it like this, if there's a home that has a lot of dogs in the backyard and they're going to clean up the waste, that's up. The smell wafts in neighboring properties, certainly the odor wouldn't rise to the level of being an air quality control issue, but it certainly would still be an odor issue. And I think that, you know, this is kind of the same thing. So that's where we, I think that the Planning Commission's decision is defensible legally. I found case law to support the condition. Um, and so that's all I'm going to say about that. I'll briefly address the other issues that were raised in the appeal letter. Um, first, the RTO condition, this was not an arbitrary, egregious decision. Um, it was based on information from the NDEP, as Hope explained. She's not, you know, designer or manufacturer of asphalt plants, and so she wasn't an expert. And the experts, the P and from UNR, told her that the RTO might be, um, an appropriate piece of equipment based on what happened in Furley. Furley had an asphalt plant that had a similar problem. The owner installed it, you know, and the problem went away. And so reasonably, we believed that based on this recommendation from the NDEP, that it was appropriate. We later learned that this was not the right piece of equipment, and at the last Planning Commission meeting, the T, the, um, Planning Commission rescinded, really, there's no basis for repayment of attorney's fees as requested. Um, next, the issue of EcoSorb. Um, it's not within the board's expertise or ability to declare that EcoSorb is effective or not. I don't think that's a decision that you can make. Um, there wasn't any evidence presented into the record by the appellant regarding the efficacy of EcoSorb. Um, and there's no basis to reinstate that decision, or that condition, excuse me. Uh, the lighting condition, as I mentioned, is a standard condition. Um, there really was no reason, um, or, um, described in the, stating why they attacked that. I'm sure we'll have more from the appellate counsel, but really, there's no reason for that. And finally, uh, the issue of hours. Um, you know, the Planning Commission heard evidence from the community that they were operating beyond the hours they were allowed, and that was the reason why that condition was removed. So again, it's based on evidence from the community. Um, I'm sure the, uh, appellant will refute that, but that's the reason why the Planning Commission made the decision that it did. So I submit to you that the Planning Commission's decision is defensible and should be upheld. Thank you.
Where are you, Ben? I'm sorry, I was looking at something else there. Let me ask you a question. Ben, what effect can you, what, what legal effect are the complaints that we've received and NDEP has received and Lion County has received? What's the legal effect of that? If any?
I don't think there's a legal effect, um, Mr. Mayor. I don't know that they've been forwarded to the Division for possible citation. I'm not quite sure, um, what code enforcement's position is on that. Um, I certainly know that the NDEP responds to the complaints and have gone out there several times to be testing. But I'm not sure beyond that.
Okay. Does it seem, I mean, we've received, Carson City's received ninety-nine complaints? Ninety-eight are from Tahoe Western, ninety-eight are odor? Right?
I believe- I believe that's correct, yes.
Yeah. And I think NDEP or Lyon County has received 400 and some odd complaints. Does that ring a bell?
That's correct. Yes.
So it's hard for me to understand, Ben, how we can get that many complaints. I get the fact that they're saying it's only coming out of a couple of people. I haven't gone back to check that, but I'll tell you, it's hard to understand why things haven't been corrected out there if they're close to, I think there are 400 complaints at NDEP or something like that. I go back and look at them, but it's hard for me to understand why Tahoe Western hasn't addressed those complaints. I just don't understand that. I mean, there are close to 1,000 complaints out there and now we're being faced with this again. What, are the complaints worthwhile, not worthwhile? I mean, it seems to me like they might be used as justification for at least the reasonableness of any decisions that are made.
And I'm not certain, you know, I know certainly as far as NDEP that in the past they have fined TWA for air quality issues. And I know that, you know, I'm sure the representative from TWA will point out that many of the complaints are coming from the same homeowners. But, you know, we certainly saw more than one homeowner at, you know, all three of the planning commission meetings that Hope mentioned complaining about the issue. And I, so I'm not sure, you know, the applicant was willing in the beginning to work with using EcoZorb. You know, apparently that didn't help. They've proposed doing something else commercially available, but haven't said, you know, what that might be.
All right. All right. Got anything else? Is that it? What you, so let me, let me just kind of reiterate where I think you, what you said here, just so I'm on the, that the planning commission criteria that they have on it are not unconstitutionally vague on the odor issue? Do you agree with that?
Correct. I found case law that has supported, you know, a condition where it says that odor cannot leave, you know, or cannot cross the property line. You know, I understand that may seem vague on its face, or excuse me, not on its face, and they seem vague to you, but having done the research, you know, I've seen instances where it's been upheld.
Okay. Have you made a judgment call as to whether or not, from your opinion, granted it's an opinion, as to whether or not the, what, the evidence before the planning commission would constitute substantial evidence to base the conditions on?
I think that having heard the number, you know, it's all, of course, anecdotal, you know, stories from the homeowners who live in the community and who are affected. But I believe that the complaints are, you know, there's a sufficient number, you know, that there is substantial evidence to support.
All right. I just want to make sure. So, okay, where are we now? What's next? Any other questions? Anybody have any questions? Ben? Go, jump in there.
So in general, Ben, did we analyze how many homeowners are in that area? Are there 400 homeowners and 10 complainers? Or do we have a ratio or anything instead of it's 1,000 complaints, but was it 10 people? But the residential area is 400 people. I'm just trying to get the scope of the complaint.
That's an excellent question, Supervisor Bagwell. Unfortunately, I don't have that information. I don't know, you know, how large the community is versus how many complaints we're receiving. You know, there was a petition submitted by Lyon County residents at one of the meetings and included as supporting material. I don't know off the top of my head how many people signed that. I do know that the appellant submitted a similar petition of people allegedly supporting TWA. However, you might notice that that petition didn't have any addresses, you know, there's really no way of verifying where those people came from. So I don't know, hope I might be able to answer that question, but I'm not sure.
What I'm doing is I'm looking really quick at the November planning mission minutes because I feel like we had a lot of people at that meeting and I wanted to just count. Have I counted how many households? No, I have not. We do have a picture up there that shows you it's a bit isolated there. We also did receive complaints from businesses. There was a shed shop, I want to say it was called Ed Sheds or something. He's a business owner who came out and complained, or I don't want to say complained, spoke at the public hearing. Also, our own code enforcement officers have been over to the Mount House area and have independently smelled the odor. So we are not relying solely on the residents and business owners in Lyon County. We have, our own staff has independently observed it. And I'll double check on how many people spoke in November.
And Hope, just to, so I don't make a mistake on the record, I know we've got 99 complaints out of, you know, that have been filed with us. And I, we've got, Lyon County's had complaints filed with them and so has NDEP. And somehow the number of 400 sticks with both of them, but maybe I'm wrong. Do you know what that number is?
I do not know, but I do know that it's a large enough number that the three agencies, if you will, we're trying to figure out because we're all being inundated with complaints and it's the same nature of the complaint.
Say what?
Nature, the odors. And I'm, well, we have, okay, in fairness, you have people who make phone calls. So, for example, at the hearing, and again, I'll look at the November minutes are in the packet, but we had people who came out at that hearing who had their children speak for them because they don't speak English. You had people coming out at that meeting who are at work during the day and they're having the experience at night. So how many people are actually bringing, picking up the phone? I can't answer that question right now, but I will tell you that the amount of people being impacted by that is greater than the number of people answering the phone and, or picking up the phone. Also, it's hard to pick up the phone and make a complaint, particularly to a neighboring jurisdiction. I feel like the November meeting was, was a surprisingly large turnout, so I really want to look at what that number was. And I just, I can't right now tell you how many complaints there are, but it's taking an inordinate amount of time by all three agencies.
Go, okay. Who's next? Anybody? Brad, did you want to?
I have a question, Ben.
Okay, go.
So I'll just go right for it, Ben. So if the objective is to say that an odor cannot leave their property and yet that's impossible for the asphalt plant to achieve because there is nose, and what does odor mean? If I smell it for 12 seconds, it passes my nose, they're in noncompliance? Does that mean we're going to take their permit? I mean, that's the nutshell here. And we might as well just get to the issue is, that's the problem here is where are we doing the measurement? So I'll disclose that I live near the Carson City sewer plant and I assure you the odors leave the property line and I smell it. But is it overriding enough to say that we have to close the sewer plant? So that's what I'm trying to understand here when we say we're going to send code enforcement because, yeah, I smell it. Well, is it so bad? I mean, I don't understand the level to just say no odors can escape a property line. So that's why, did you find case law the opposite direction to that said it was too vague or only that it's supported in every case that you reviewed?
I didn't really, that's a good question. Thank you, Supervisor Bagwell. Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney for the Record. I haven't necessarily found case law saying that it's too vague. You know, again, I haven't done, you know, a thoroughly exhaustive search, did research in preparation of this appeal, but I didn't come across anything that said that it's blatantly unconstitutional. Certainly in looking at some of the other codes that do incorporate a kind of condition or requirement that odor not leave the property line, you know, some of the do at, such as the city of Reno, they couch it in terms of a nuisance standard. So the city of Reno ordinance said that, you know, odor shall not be emitted in quantity or volume unless it creates a nuisance or hazard beyond the property line. And those terms would have the, you know, the regular meaning under the law, you know, a nuisance or hazard, you know, safety hazard. I've seen the same thing. And the Nashville ordinance saying that, you know, there should be no use that allows the emission of gases, vapors, or other objectionable odors beyond the property line which causes injury, detriment, nuisance, or annoyance to any considerable number of persons or the public which causes a tendency or has to damage business or property. So, you know, if you're uncomfortable about the language there, you could add some qualifying language, you know. Hope mentioned the NDEP standards, you use a, I think called a nasal ranger, I've also heard of an olfactory instrument tool. I don't believe Carson City currently has one of those, but you know, some jurisdictions use that to measure the smell. But I haven't seen, you know, specific requirements as to, you know, you have to go out and smell it for at least 15 minutes before it's considered a nuisance.
Mr. Mayor, I've just done some counts, if I may. At the planning commission's meeting in November, 15 people spoke at their public hearing. Also on page 655 of your packet, which again is part of the record that the planning commission considered, you have a petition signed by 70 people.
2016 on the original, oh wait, what page?
I'm sorry, page 655. It starts on page 655.
2016, when you were doing the adjusted permit.
No, that was 2019 is the date stamp on that, November 2019.
Oh, the dates that they signed this are 2016, 2016.
Oh, I see, because they.
They just copied it to you from the original permit request.
Actually, I think they copied it from something they submitted to the state.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a second, Brad, let me just clear up my mess I made here. Just on the complaints, I found the, where I was referring to the complaints is from the Lyon County Board of Commissioners who say they have received more than 41 complaints regarding this issue, regarding emissions and odors. Department of Environmental Protection says that they've received 32 complaints between January and April of this year and 458 complaints before that. And we've got 99 complaints here, or 90, 99. So just want to put that on record. Brad, I'm sorry, just stepped in.
I have a procedural question for either Ben or Dan. What's in front of us today is an appeal and there are six items that are being requested under that appeal. Ben, you just said that we could modify the language on item number two, but is that the case or is this a up or down vote on each one of those items and then refer it back to the planning commission with direction to come up with alternative language? And I'm not advocating, I'm not saying that I'm leaning one way or another, I'm just asking a procedural question. I don't know that we do have the ability to modify language under this agenda item, unless I'm wrong.
Well, this is, we don't have, I mean, this is an appeal, it's not a de novo review. Everybody knows what de novo means, a new, a new case. So we're really taking the record as it's been developed at the planning commission. My understanding is, Ben, you might want to, or Dan, might want to elucidate or not elucidate, but go down a little bit more of the road so that we know where we are because he's got a good question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you just want, oh, sorry, I was going to say I would pull up the code unless the answer of the.
So I, I think the question as presented on the record, Supervisor Bonikowski, is, you know, what is the extent of the authority or flexibility with respect to what this board can order, you know, on these different findings that are enumerated? I, I don't think that this is purely just, you know, a deny or approve sort of a situation. I do believe that as a quasi judicial body right now, that you do have that sort of latitude in being able to modify some of those conditions. So it's not simply just an up-down vote on this matter and then also consisting with the broadness of the language that's, that comprises the agenda title itself. I believe that the scope of authority there is also consistent with the requirements of the open meeting law. I think it's also consistent with the authority that's granted to this board under those provisions of the code. But, you know, I don't, and I also, like Ben stated, I don't have that citation in front of me at this time. But I will also note that, and not that this is definitive by any means, but in the staff report, I believe at the last section, towards the bottom, I believe that there is a suggestion there in terms of what alternative actions may be taken, you know, by this body. And I believe, if I remember correctly, some of those alternative suggestions could be, you know, modifications in addition to, you know, denial or approval. So I believe, again, that is consistent with how this board has exerted its authority in the past. I believe it's consistent with CCMC provisions and I believe it's also consistent with how the agenda title is written.
So then when it comes time to vote on this, then we can vote on each one of these separate items separately?
In my opinion, yes, you could do that.
Okay, that would be my request, is that we address each one separately.
And I think, again, that's just a matter of procedure, but I'll defer to the board's discretion, what would be most convenient and also what would make it most clear on the record. Certainly, you could take separate action, meaning a separate motion and a second for each of the findings. If there were a consensus before this board, you can certainly wrap it all, roll it all into one motion. But again, you know, as a matter of procedure, I would leave that completely to the board's discretion.
Now you got to help me.
Mr. Mayor.
Now you got to help me a little bit. I thought I asked Ben if there was substantial evidence in the record to support these findings. I, I can't hear him too well, this virtual stuff is nuts, but I believe he said that there was substantial evidence for each of them.
For the record, Mayor, yes, that is what I heard on the record.
So if it's, if they made that finding, so are we review, if we review one through six, or the number there, are we looking to say whether you had substantial evidence or not to make that finding?
That's correct. That's what I would urge this board as the proper standard, as, as the mayor has recognized on the record and as Ben has pointed out as counsel for the planning commission. This is not a de novo review, meaning that, you know, what this board is really tasked with doing is to make a finding in essence that the planning commission did not act arbitrarily or capriciously, that they had that level of evidence that was necessary in steering them towards the decision that they made. Not necessarily whether or not that this board agrees or disagrees, and that really falls within the authority that's exercised by the planning commission itself.
All right, thank you. Go, sorry.
So in, in keeping with what you're doing, so can you please provide for me where the evidence is supported about the operational times of the plant? I get the odor, but what does that got to do with the operating times then?
The operating times, there were, Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney for the Record. So the original request was to modify the SUP to allow extended hours on nights and weekends. And the evidence is from the homeowners and the residents that they were operating beyond those hours. And so in order to reduce the pollution, sorry, the odor, you know, give some relief to the homeowners, the planning commission reversed its decision and removed the extended hours for the nights and weekends because there was evidence and testimony given by the homeowners that they were operating beyond the hours in the middle of the night and on days when they weren't supposed to.
May I follow?
Just for the record, on the other question, 18.02, 060, says that the board can affirm, modify, or reverse the decision. So yes, the board would have the authority to modify the conditions without sending it back to the planning commission.
So if I can just follow up, because unless I'm, it's a big packet, unless I've missed something. something, if the permit allowed them to operate at night and 30 Sundays, at nighttime was to do municipal, right, for municipal purposes, where in here did it say, what is nighttime? I couldn't even find the definition. Was that from the 7:00 PM to 7:00? What was the definition of nighttime? So that I can see the evidence that supports they were violating it. And a violation is why would I then reduce it if the reduction is to get rid of the odor? So I'm just trying to get the two parts playing together here. If condition two is remove the odor, then condition six doesn't matter. Doesn't matter what time of day I'm operating, I can't have any odor. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand this. Thank you.
I can speak to the evolution of the hours of operation. When this was approved in 2011, that's when the hours of operation were initially established. So we'd have to go back into the record from 2011 to see why the Planning Commission at that time felt it was appropriate to create hours of operation. Those hours of operation were Monday through Saturday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So what is night? Night is that thing that happens outside those hours. And so you could use a word other than night, and you can just say extended hours or outside these hours. So that, that would be that answer. The applicant, when he came in in 2018 seeking an expansion of hours, asked to be able to start up his equipment at 5:30 in the morning and open his gate at 6:00 in the morning. He also thought that maybe up to 30 times a calendar year, something may come up, not necessarily just a public project, it could be a private project. I don't believe there's a restriction that be public. I don't see that. And he would like the ability to work up to 30 times. The emergency one is for city projects, that was the emergency. Up to 30 times on Sundays and in the evening in a calendar year, so that if there was a project and they were doing night work, he could supply the asphalt. And I'm looking on page 612 of the packet.
Six, just so that you recognize that. Where I got mine was the discussion on 646 that talked about running at nights exclusively for municipal and state work.
Okay. The condition of approval is condition of approval 13 on page 612.
612.
Operating on Sunday would be on an emergency basis only. I think that's existing language, as I recall, from 2011. And then what was added in November 2018 was that the applicant may work at night or on Sunday, other than on an emergency basis, up to 30 times in a calendar year. When the work is to occur on night or on Sunday, other than on an emergency basis, the operator shall advise the community development director in writing at least 72 hours prior. So the Planning Commission did strike that on their annual review. They received testimony that work was occurring outside of hours. And I think they were relying on finding two, and they felt that the operations at night and on Sundays were, were disruptive to the residential area in Mount House in terms of creating the odors and other, other fumes and things like that.
So are you saying that the complaints where it smells more at night than it does during the day?
No. In my, in my opinion, there's not a correlation between the times of operation and the times of odors. We've received reports that odors are occurring at midnight, yet the plant's not operating at midnight. So having said that, that's my opinion. I think the Planning Commission was concerned that there was a correlation. They had already expanded the hours. They had even allowed these up to 30 times in a calendar year. You can even work on Sundays and you can work at, at night, at night. And so when it came back to them and they received reports of violations of the hours of operation, as well as the public testimony, then the letters concerning the, the impacts, if you will, to the folks in Mount House, they said, okay, that 30 days, let's, let's shrink the operation hours so that we shrink the opportunity to create adverse impacts on this residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't like that. Okay.
You got it?
Yeah, I got what, I got what they did. I'm just.
Saying that condition two met what they needed. Condition two was no odors. So then the hours of operation, I'm just not seeing any evidence in the record showing me anything about hours of operation, other than if I used that to mitigate the time of the odor. But you're using number 10 to say, or number two, excuse me, to say no orders. So then I, I'm just thinking, you don't get both. It doesn't make sense. Either you're getting rid of the odors and they comply or they don't comply. And if they don't, we take the permit. So I, I'm, I'm just, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of, Ben, anybody? Hope, what else?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Who's that?
Nothing from Ben.
Ben, go.
No, he said that he didn't have any.
You didn't have any more?
No, I said I have nothing for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you gotta talk a little closer to that for the soul guys. Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, for John too. All right, what's next, Hope? Anything on this side?
If there's no further questions for the staff, I think you can hear from the appellant.
Very good. Who, who, again, who do we have here?
Jeremy Clark.
Jeremy Clark.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you for having me today. Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah. You're better than Ben was.
Okay. Well, that, that wasn't very good. So if you need me to repeat something, I'm happy to.
Okay.
All right. I'd like to start today with what TWA actually does, okay? TWA is a locally owned and operated asphalt plant that resides within the city limits of Carson City. TWA currently provides all of Carson City's asphalt for its road, municipal projects, and other construction projects. It provides this asphalt to Carson City on a discounted rate and pays Carson City thousands of dollars in sales tax every year. The reason we're here today is because the Planning Commission has acted beyond its scope of authority in two respects. First, in that despite what staff and counsel for the city has mentioned, the Planning Commission is in fact regulating air quality rather than odors. And we know that the Planning Commission is regulating air quality because of the arbitrary and capricious conditions that were previously issued by the Planning Commission, specifically the $1.8 million regenerative thermal oxidizer that it required TWA to purchase and install at its facility. Regenerative thermal oxidizers affect air quality specifically, and they are meant to prevent air quality, poor air quality fumes from entering into the atmosphere traveling. The second way we know the Planning Commission is governing air quality rather than odors is the February 26th notice of decision prohibits any fumes from going beyond TWA's property line. Okay? The second and most important aspect where the Planning Commission is acting beyond its authority is with respect to jurisdiction. The Planning Commission is air quality, is governing air quality in Lyon County. As Mr. Sullivan showed the board at the onset of this agenda item today, the bright line, you have total western asphalt on the Carson City side, and then you have Mount House and its 278 residences on the Lyon County side. What we know is that the Planning Commission, and I, and I think the board will understand this, the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission in Carson City don't have jurisdiction to govern air quality at all, most less govern air quality or odors in Lyon County. With respect to jurisdiction, TWA has submitted dozens of signatures from Carson City residents to the Planning Commission in an effort to show that there are no odor complaints coming from Carson City. No odor complaints at all. And we also pointed out in our February 14th letter to the Planning Commission that 95% of the complaints coming out of Mount House in Lyon County came from five people in 2019. So of the 278 residents in Mount House, 95% of those complaints were hit by only five of those residences. And what was troubling to TWA was a statement from one of the Planning Commissioners, Commissioner Doris, who said, accepted the word of non-residents with respect to an alleged odor, and said that dozens of signatures TWA provided were really inconsequential, just inconsequential. And, and that's troubling, because that's what the Planning Commission should be governing. They should be governing the peaceful enjoyment and economic value within Carson City. And Mount House residents really shouldn't be complaining to Carson City, the Planning Commission, code enforcement, the board supervisors at all. They should be complaining to Lyon County, where they reside, and/or the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection. To my next point, with respect to the complaints being from Lyon County residents, is legally the exact same thing as the Carson City Planning Commission accepting air quality complaints from residents in Elko County, or Clark County, or Washoe County. And I think the answer to residents in Elko County would simply be, look, we're sorry you have an air quality issue in Elko County, that's outside of our jurisdiction and we can't address that.
Would JB, can I ask?
The Mount House residents also have remedies well beyond what this Board of Supervisors can or should provide. They are well within their rights to bring a private right of action or cause of action against TWA in district court if they so choose, and we'd be happy to defend that. Their remedies also include making complaints to Lyon County and NDP, which they are doing. But their remedies don't include approaching Carson City Planning Commission, code enforcement, or board supervisors, and asking them to adjust, or amend, or revoke TWA's SUP based on complaints that originate outside of Carson City. TWA has been and continues to be in compliance with the original terms of its special use permit. It is zoned for industrial use. The Planning Commission and the board supervisors already approved TWA's land use because it is zoned for personal use and there are no residences inside Carson City that are being affected by alleged air quality issues or. We respectfully believe that the Planning Commission is unfairly targeting TWA and treating TWA differently than they're treating any resident or any other business within Carson City. No other business or resident is prohibited from having odors or fumes escape their property within Carson City. That includes the sewer plant, as, as Ms. Supervisor said earlier. It also includes Brunswick Canyon Materials, also an asphalt plant located within Carson City. They don't have the same conditions on their SUP that TWA does, and they likewise have similar complaint history for residents in Carson City, and that is zero complaints. Moreover, Brunswick Canyon Materials doesn't have a condition where code enforcement is specifically targeting Brunswick Canyon by having additional enforcement activities at their plant. Moreover, the condition requires Carson City code enforcement to enter into Lyon County, smell the air, and determine whether there's an odor. And respectfully, the subjective nature of that code enforcement mechanism not only goes against the jurisdictional authority of Carson City, but it is also constitutionally Condition 17, I will also make the point, and that's the condition that says you can't have odors emanating outside of the property line. It was made up on the spot by the Planning Commission. They, they were debating on how to handle this, and I would encourage the board to go back and listen to context of everything that was said in that meeting. I think what the board will find is that we're not pulling anything out of context here in our letter. We're, we're capturing things exactly as they were said with proper references. And I would encourage the board to go back and look at that. And what you'll find is that during the debate, the Planning Commission arbitrarily said, well, how about we just make it so they can't have odors outside of their property line? And, and that is arbitrary and capricious, and in essence requiring only TWA, all the businesses in Carson City, to erect some sort of odor barrier, which again, is a business ending condition. The Planning Commission's advocating on behalf of non-residents has caused significant damage to TWA. It has had to fight against the arbitrary and capricious $1.8 million RTO condition, spending thousands of dollars in attorney's fees to do so. And it has suffered vandalism at its asphalt plant. And I think the board saw some comments come in from non-residents where similar threats were being made to that which is going on in Minneapolis. And, you know, certainly we don't condone violence, looting, or vandalism, but that's what's happening to TWA, is their plant is being vandalized, causing thousands of dollars in damages to it. I would submit to the board that this, while it seems like it may be a complicated issue with respect to jurisdiction, it really is straightforward. Carson City, per municipal code 1802.0805B, is required to govern the peaceful enjoyment and economic value of Carson City. That code provision presumes that the surrounding neighborhoods are within Carson City. It does not presume to be beyond the city limits of Carson. So Carson City should, you know, it's, it's very simple, and I don't think Carson City has, has a choice. When it responds to the, the Mount House residents, they've got legal recourse in Lyon County, with NDP and planning causes of action, but they can't use Carson City to get as the means to their, to their end, which is to shut TWA down. Lyon County covers land use in Lyon County, and the NDP covers air quality and odors. And they have objective measures, as was stated previously. The NDP, that there's a suggestion by staff and by Mr. Johnson, that the NDPs got really, you know, high standards that TWA can never trigger. What I would tell the board is that TWA is working very closely with NDP. We have weekly telephone conferences with five or six staff members, including the Director of the Air Quality, Bureau of Air Quality, Planning Division, coming up with solutions, working through the process of revising the air quality permit, implementing new pieces of equipment. We are actively involved in addressing the complaints that are being raised and attempting to create harmony between TWA and its neighbors in Lyon County. So to say, inferes that NDP isn't doing their job, whereas addressing the issue is completely false, and I know from firsthand experience, that they, they run a tight ship and they are closely monitoring the situation. The issue of air quality in Mount House falls squarely within the authority and jurisdiction of the NDP. It does not fall within the jurisdiction of Carson City. With respect to standard overview today, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, you know, we're looking at substantial evidence. Is there substantial evidence to support the Commission's findings? The answer is nope, there's no evidence to support the findings. There's no evidence from within Carson City suggesting there's an odor issue at TWA. Therefore, as laid out in our May 12, 2020 appeal memo to the board, we request that all of our conditions be granted therein. The board simply cannot rely on complaints from non-residents to substantiate modifying TWA's, modifying and ultimately revoking TWA's special use permit, which it has not violated, which it is in full conformance with, and which it continues to work with NDP to maintain compliance with state laws as well. If I may review my notes, just to make sure I cover the things that were said previously. If I may review my notes, just to make sure I covered the things that were said previously.
Take your time.
One thing that we looked at in our research was whether a city government can exercise jurisdiction beyond its borders. And we have found in multiple cases where, when the city acts beyond its jurisdiction, those decisions get overturned time to time again. And I didn't hear Mr. Johnson mention anything in his remarks that said that Carson City would be permitted in a situation like this to rely on complaints from non-residents to modify an SUP from a business that resides in Carson City. Mr. Johnson also mentioned that if we, if you granted our appeal, that it would render the code meaningless. And I disagree with that statement, because the code is still in full force and effect with respect to Carson City residents, which is who the code is meant to govern. It's not meant to govern Lion County residents. It's not meant to protect Lion County residents. NDEP is to govern cross-jurisdictional issues. State governments are meant to address those issues. And I concur with Carson City District Attorney, who mentioned that the board can modify the conditions as set forth in our May 20th, May 12th letter. However, I think that what we're trying to do is avoid a lawsuit with Carson City. We don't want to have to continue to pursue this. The authorities are crystal clear that Carson City does not have authority beyond its city limit, does not have authority in Lion County, or Elko County, or Clark County. And if TWA's SUP is amended based on complaints originating outside the county, fortunately TWA will have no choice but to pursue this further. TWA continues to work with NDEP and to address air quality issues, which in turn addresses odor issues, and we would like to continue that process, which NDEP will not allow it to be successful, and TWA fully understands that. That's all I have. If there's any questions?
I didn't hear the last comment you made, JB. Say that again, about NDEP, would it allow it and did it allow?
NDEP won't allow TWA to violate the air quality standards, and that's been made clear. We are addressing the permit, the equipment, and the air quality tests on a weekly basis, and complaints. There's a process that TWA has implemented where they will send TWA a list of complaints sent in by Mount House residents, and we have to respond to those complaints with the time of day we were operating, the air quality conditions outside, how many tons we were making, and any breakdowns in equipment that happened that could have caused the air quality issue. So there is an established procedure to address complaints with the NDEP. This is really overkill to have multiple jurisdictions addressing the same issue, particularly in Carson City's case, when it lacks jurisdiction to address the issue in the first place. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Sorry. Just, I wanted to address something that Council for TWA just said, and I want to make sure that, you know, I heard him correctly, because if I did hear him correctly, I just want to provide, you know, some clarity, you know, on the record. I thought what I had heard was, you know, Council for TWA characterizing my previous advice on the record as board council, that, you know, my recommendation or advice is that no modifications could be made, and that is not what I said. You know, what I did say, in fact, was that modifications can be made, it's just that it's steered by whether or not you can make a finding that there was enough evidence on the record at the previous level, you know, for the planning commission to make the decisions that it did. So it may very well have been that I misheard Council for TWA, but I just wanted to make that clear on the record.
While we're talking, then, Brad, did you have a question? Go. Do you want to go? I just got your light here, so go.
Mayor, just very briefly, there were some items I heard by Jeremy Clark I'd like to just address very briefly. One, he indicated a regenerative thermal oxidizer is used exclusively for air quality. I don't share that opinion. The issue's moot anyway, but I just want to be clear that you see emails in the record between me and staff at NDEP indicating it was a resolution to an odor issue. I also had conversations, which I advised the planning commission of, with the city manager in Fernley, who explained to me the odor issue they were experiencing in Fernley, how they worked with this particular business, the RTO, or regenerative thermal oxidizer, was installed, and the odor problems were addressed. So that was purely about odor, not about air quality. The applicant indicates that condition, or the appellant, that condition seventeen on page 612 addresses fumes. It does not address fumes, it addresses odors. He also indicates that the planning commission is trying to govern air quality in Mount House as well as in Lion County. That is not true. The planning commission has always focused on odors. The appellant indicated there's been 15 complaints, the planning commission is not responding to complaints. The planning commission is responding to public comment, received at public hearings on the record. Fifteen people spoke to the planning commission at its November meeting, eight people spoke to it at its February meeting. The planning commission has established conditions of approval relative to odors in the past. It's on page 609 of your packet. There have been 16 special use permits for marijuana-related uses, and each of those has a condition of approval that addresses odors impacting nearby properties. In terms of Brunswick Materials, not having a condition of approval concerning odor, that's a true statement. I can't remember when Brunswick Materials received their SUP, it was quite some time ago. Tahoe Western Asphalt didn't have a condition about odors either, in 2011. I always say, when we consider a special use permit, we try to cast a wide net, we try to think of every impact we can think of. Odors didn't come up in 2011. When they came in to amend the permit in 2018, odors were up front and center. That's why that condition is there. And I will stop there. Thank you, Mayor.
Brad, jump in.
Jeremy, first item, is there currently a condition of the special use permit that a regenerative thermal oxidizer be installed?
That condition was modified at the February 26 meeting to the current condition seventeen, which requires no odors be allowed past the property line. The reason it's not a moot issue for TWA is because that condition was initially implemented in November of 2019, forcing TWA to appeal it, and Commissioner Wiggins on the record stating that that was a ridiculous condition that had the effect of putting TWA out of business. That condition also had an effect of causing TWA thousands of dollars in attorney's fees. So that's why it's not a moot issue for TWA, but no, it is not currently a condition on proposed SUP by the planning commission.
And most of your presentation had to do with air quality and the regenerative thermal oxidizer, so if that is no longer a condition of the SUP, then, in my mind, that invalidates a good portion of your presentation. I believe that the only condition having to do with air quality as part of the SUP now is number 12, which delegates that authority to NDEP. And so...
I would...
Go ahead.
Sorry. Wasn't sure if that was a question.
Well, it was a question to Hope, but...
Correct.
Thank you. So then, item number two, 18.02.0805B. I can't find anything in that that states that the impacts of land use for a Carson City business stops at the county line. What it says, I believe, is the general neighborhood, not the Carson City boundary. So I believe that we do have the ability and the obligation to address the impacts of a Carson City business regardless, if it's in the general neighborhood and on adjacent properties, then I believe that we do have an obligation to address that for the Carson City business. Number three, the list of Carson City signatures that stated that they had no complaints, I didn't see addresses. So I have no idea where those people live. For all I know, they live down on Coons Lane, which, of course, there wouldn't be any issues, they wouldn't have complaints because they don't live in the neighborhood. So without having the specific property addresses of where those people live, I don't know how I analyze that data to see if it's impactful. Number four, Carson City does have the authority to add conditions above and beyond just the zoning uses, and in fact, that's the whole purpose of a special use permit, which is by design supposed to be on a case-by-case basis. So saying, as an example, this special use permit does or does not have this condition doesn't mean that another special use permit for the same type of business is going to have the same conditions. And then also, on number five, Brunswick, I believe I heard you say that they have had no complaints and they're not subject to monitoring, but wouldn't one be because of the other? If there's no complaints, there wouldn't be any purpose for monitoring. In this particular case, Western Asphalt does have complaints, which led to the condition for monitoring. So those are my observations and questions.
May I address those briefly?
Yeah, go ahead, JB. Please do so.
Okay. With respect to the impact, and Mr. Supervisor mentioned that he thinks that Carson City's got an obligation to address impacts from a Carson City business, and I would disagree with that statement. If the impacts are happening outside of the county, I think he would look at the neighboring county and where the impacts are occurring, and that county would have the authority to address what is impacting in their county. The impacts in Carson City, there are zero complaints in Carson City. There are no complaints from residents, there are no complaints from businesses, and I think Ms. Sullivan can confirm that her code enforcement has not received complaints from Carson City residents. There's zero evidence supporting the findings from the planning commission, much less substantial evidence. If this were a Lion County commission meeting, the analysis would be different. If this were an NDEP panel meeting, the analysis would be different, because they have jurisdiction. Lion County's got jurisdiction over the impact, and EEP's got certainly jurisdiction over the air quality. With respect to the signatures, in our December 2, 2019 appeal, there is a declaration from Robert Matthews substantiating the statements made in that appeal, and that statements in that appeal were that the signatures were obtained from Carson City residents. So that's where TWA gathered the signatures, and that's who that declaration substantiates that contention. I understand the Minister Supervisor's point about different conditions for different companies, but when we're looking at the fact that there are zero complaints for TWA from Carson City residents, and there are zero complaints from Brunswick from Carson City residents, they should be treated the same.
Okay. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm quite mindful of my role during this appeal, and I want to state that for the record, because I want to make clear that, you know, I don't, when I'm providing, you know, commentary on the record in my capacity as board counsel, I really want to try to limit myself to matters of procedure, you know, matters of substance, you know, merits of the arguments, you know, primarily, I want to defer that to my colleague Ben Johnson, who's also in my office, who's acting his capacity today before the board as an advocate or a representative of the planning commission and its decisions at the lower level. I think that, however, you know, with issues involving questions concerning jurisdiction, that's primarily, you know, a matter of procedure, and I do want to advise, you know, this board in my capacity as board counsel, what my legal opinion on that matter is. I think that, you know, at least in my opinion, I believe that Council for TWA may be conflating, you know, the question of standing with the question of jurisdiction. The parties that are involved in this appeal before the board are TWA and the planning commission. Certainly, they have standing in this matter. I think that this board can exercise jurisdiction as a regulatory body over a business that operates and resides within county lines. I don't believe that there is any case law, at least none that I can think of off the cuff, that would dictate, as established legal precedent, that any sort of a regulatory body may not rely to some extent on any sort of injury that's suffered by a non-resident. I'll use as a quick illustration, for example, I would find it very difficult to believe if there were a, let's say, a retail mail-order business that has a brick-and-mortar shop located in the state of Nevada, and, you know, the customers that receive fraudulent products that have a tendency to severely injure or kill somebody that resides in a different state, and if those reports made it back to a regulatory body here in the state of Nevada, and let's say also, for example, for legal enforcement or law enforcement purposes, the Office of the Attorney General and their Consumer Protection Bureau. I find it hard to believe that an argument would be sustained by a court of law where, you know, the concept is such that, well, because it's only non-residents, people outside of the state of Nevada who have been injured, in fact, that those complaints have to be disregarded. So again, I don't want to jump into the fray too much with respect to the merits of the substantive issues, but as a matter of procedure, I do want to advise this board that it is my opinion as board counsel that there is sufficient jurisdiction here as a regulatory body. And I understand, of course, you know, that TWA's counsel, you know, has a difference of opinion, but that's what lawyers do, we disagree. I just wanted to provide my opinion.
Let me ask both lawyers this question. This is a fascinating question. Suppose we put a gun range right on top of the mountains out there, and the gun range is right on the county line, and through the operations of the gun range, a Lion County residence was killed. Who has jurisdiction to try that case? JB, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the county where the impact happened, I would argue certainly has jurisdiction to hear that case. So if the gun range was in Carson City impacting Lion County, then Lion County would have the right of action against Carson City gun range, in terms of its regulations and regular court body. But certainly, the resident who was shot in your scenario would have a private cause of action against the gun range and/or the shooter at the gun range.
They have positive action against us, too.
I think that's one thing we're forgetting here, is that the Mount House residents, they have remedies here, they have private remedies, and the NDEP is already acting on their behalf. And really, that's, too much government oversight is really bogging TWA down and fighting fights on multiple fronts, when NDEP is the proper entity that's looking at air quality, that's addressing it, and it has the authority to do so.
Okay. Were either you or your client present at the May 21 meeting of the Lion County Board of Commissioners?
No, sir.
Have you read that letter?
I have.
Anything in there that's wrong?
My thoughts on the letter are that they didn't take a strong stance either way, other than they, it looks like they're attempting to ask you to carry the burden in the last paragraph on the first page. So, you know, the... So, you know, my thoughts are that the NDEP's got jurisdiction, they're the ones that should be handling it, they are handling it. And now we could, TWA could be fighting front with Lyon County, with Carson City, and with NDEP, all of which are costing thousands of dollars for TWA, impacting its efficiency and its ability to operate a lawful business. And ultimately, it's having a massive impact for TWA.
Go ahead.
So Jeremy, if I may, do you believe that the residents of Mound House are experiencing odors from the plant?
I think that there may be odors that drift in and then drift right out. TWA can't control the wind, and there are varying wind patterns up there from what we've seen. And what I can tell you is that TWA is actively addressing the issue. But I don't, I think that the issues that the Mound House residents are stating are largely over-exaggerated. We found multiple instances of misrepresentations with respect to when TWA is operating. We have noticed that 95% of the complaints, 278 residences in Mound House, come from five households. And you've got a very minor vocal few who are creating headaches for Carson City Planning, Carson City Code Enforcement, Lyon County, NDEP. I mean, you're talking, as the mayor said, close to 1,000 complaints. And in our opinion, those are largely overblown, and the result of a vendetta against my client. So while there may be odors that have traveled into Mound House, I think that they are largely exaggerated, and that's my thought on that.
John? Supervisor Barrett? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Can you hear me okay? Jeremy, first of all, let me ask you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
If you can't, wave at me on the screen or talk. Okay, there you go. All right, Supervisor Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to ask the counsel for the appellant, did I hear him correctly that he said that the people of Lyon County can't come to us, or something of that nature? And that one of their methodologies of seeking corrective action would be a lawsuit against your client?
Yes, sir. I made those points that Lyon County residents should not be coming to Carson City Planning Commission, Code Enforcement, or Board of Supervisors for air quality complaints occurring in Lyon County. The impacts happen in Lyon County allegedly, and it can be addressed by Lyon County. I also said that Mound House residents can bring a private lawsuit if they want against TWA, which we would be happy to defend. My point there is that they've got remedies that don't include Carson City.
Thank you. And did I also hear you correctly when you said you're trying to avoid a lawsuit with Carson City? You, your client, I should say?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. I'm curious, because your argument seems to be mostly jurisdictional, and raising the issue of a lawsuit against Carson City at the same time as you, which you are leading me to believe, I think, that you don't want to do, doesn't always square with my view of things when you are inviting a lawsuit from the people who are complaining to Carson City, the NDEP, and Lyon County about your client's behaviors. Can you square that for me?
Lawsuits are bad for business, for any company. So I don't want to make it seem that we're inviting a lawsuit. My point is that there are legal remedies that the Mound House residents can pursue, that we would not have a jurisdictional or standing issue to discuss, as we are in this case.
I don't imagine that you can tell me how much in attorney's fees and costs are going to cost, that are going to fall to your client over a long period of time on this. But I know attorney's fees, I'm not an attorney, but I've dealt with them before, are not insignificant. I don't imagine yours are. I won't ask you what you charge. But could this not be corrected, short of attorney's fees, with something like the matter that was provided regarding something that would take care of the odors, as Hope has told us? 1.8 million? I don't know that you get that high, but I'm just asking a question.
Yes, sir. And your points well taken. And we are working with the NDEP currently, who has to approve each and every piece of equipment that TWA purchases and uses on its property in the production of asphalt. So, and in doing that, NDEP is actively, weekly monitoring the complaints from Mound House residents and engaging with myself and Robert Matthews, the owner of TWA, to address those complaints. So the point is, yes, I think we can get through this process without any lawsuits, and we'd like to do that. But what we can have is an arbitrary and capricious condition that says if it happens to be a windy day, but my client is pouring, creating asphalt for municipal project for Carson City, and then all of a sudden, code enforcement is pulling his S U P. So those are the things that we're trying to avoid. What we'd like is for Carson City to monitor the odors and peaceful enjoyment of Carson City residents, let NDEP control the air quality issues, and allow the NDEP process to continue. So Tahoe Western Asphalt and up at its plant, and be in full compliance with NDEP without the owner's condition that any given day, TWA could violate the S U P based on the wind blowing at the wrong time. So that's really what we're trying to avoid, and that's the purpose of the appeal, is really Condition 17, and also to limit the increased code enforcement actions against my client. That's the purpose of why we're here.
Thank you. Final question, can you tell me or shed any light on the reason for complaints that your client has been operating outside the hours that are required by the S U P?
Yes, sir. We have, we are, we just let Carson City Planning Division and the NDEP know this past week that we would be operating at night in accordance with the S U P. So whenever we operate at night or on the weekends, TWA is well aware that they need to advise Carson City Planning Commission and the NDEP. And it is doing that right now. I can't speak to every complaint, but what I do know is that after reviewing a large number of complaints, we found outright fabrication. So the credibility of the residents is in question, and it's clear that five residents in Mound House have a, have certainly a vendetta against TWA.
Go ahead.
So Jeremy, can you explain to me what your client believes the difference is between air quality and odor? Our regulations address odor, not air quality. I agree with you, air quality is NDEP. But your indication, so what does odor mean? When is that invoked? And are you indicating, sorry, it's a multiple question. Are you indicating that if a Carson City resident sent us one complaint and said they smelled the odor, then this is valid on its face? Because it just takes a Carson City resident to say there's an odor?
I will try to address those questions. I think with respect to a Carson City resident, residents complaining about odors, what's important to remember there is that if Carson City residents were complaining at the same rate that the Mound House residents were complaining at, and it wasn't just a very small number of residents, like I said, five residents out of 278. If it was more widespread, then sure, I could see Carson City stepping in and saying, look, we've got an odor issue. I would also like to see Carson City come up with more of an objective way to measure odor, such as the nasal ranger. You know, although Ms. Sullivan isn't convinced that the nasal ranger is a good idea, it is a scientific, objective way to measure odors. And there are a number of jurisdictions around the country that approach that for this very Differentiating between odors and air quality, the issue, NDEP governs both in their regulations. Carson City, I'm just reading that Carson City doesn't have the right to, or the obligation under the Carson City Mini Code to address odors. But I think that those odors have to originate and impact Carson City, which they don't. We just have alleged odors that don't impact Carson City at all.
Well, they do in a sense, Jeremy, because we're the ones who granted this special use permit. We're the ones who put the ball in the air and put the ball in motion. And so, you know, we have, we have an obligation here, I think, because of that. So not certain it's correct to say that, you know, there's, Carson City doesn't have any, dog in the hunt, let's put it that way, it's kind of a terrible thing, but... I think I'll just, I want to just sit on, think about what I'm going to ask, so, but it's been a good legal question, so, all right, go. Who else has got some?
Mr. Mayor, just a pointed clarification. A nasal ranger does not measure odor. A nasal ranger mixes odorous air with non-odorous air so that a human can smell. Thank you.
Jamie, I'm, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that you've got three jurisdictions looking over your shoulder, Carson, Lyon, and NDEP. You know, and I wouldn't want that either as a business owner, because you're dealing with, you know, government. And I tend to agree with you, you know, you don't want to see government in your backyard all the time. On the other hand, on the other hand, it seems to me like you're trying to put the residents in Lyon County there who are complaining in a no-man's land, where they have no alternative but to file a lawsuit on a private right of action, which you say they have. I don't know that they do, but assume that they do, but that's what you're suggesting. So if we just take, do nothing here, what's going to happen to those odor complaints? They're going to keep coming, you're going to keep having government in your backyard, and nobody's going to solve it because everybody says it's somebody else's problem. And government, in my view, government should not be in that position where we're bouncing people back between jurisdictions. I just don't see that. But what are your, I mean, put aside this, the special use permit proceedings, what's your position? What's Tahoe Western going to do, if anything? And I, if I emphasize, if anything, what's, what are they going to do to resolve these complaints? Or, because right now, what I'm hearing you say is, you know, these, there's only a couple of them, you really don't have jurisdiction anyway. You know, so don't deal with this, Carson City. Don't we understand what's your, what's Tahoe Western's plan is?
Tahoe's Western plan is to continue to address the complaints with NDEP on a weekly basis. So as I mentioned, Danilo Dragone, the director of the Air Quality Planning, Bureau of Air Quality Planning Division of NDEP, has, sends us an email every week where there are complaints, and where we have to provide him certain information on the complaints to, so he can assess whether to substantiate those complaints or not. We also have, we are on a ticking clock right now to provide NDEP with a revised air quality permit with a plan, including all of the equipment that we plan to use, within 90 days as of mid-May. And I don't have the date with me now. But 90 days as of mid-May, we have to submit a revised air quality permit to the NDEP, which addresses all of the new equipment we've got and addresses the complaints moving forward. So it's not just that the residents, their only hope is to file suit. They, air quality issues, which this is, and on a county boundary, falls within the NDEP, and the NDEP is handling it. They are addressing it, and they, they've got, we had seven people on the last conference call, myself, and seven NDEP staff members, including the director. So they are taking this seriously, and so is TWA. And as we address the permit, and the complaints, and the reporting requirements that we've got to the NDEP, we have to report certain information every 14 days to them. These issues are going to be fixed and going to be addressed, and otherwise, the NDEP's going to shut TWA down. It's really as simple as that.
So go a little further, and we've got some other questions here for you, but go a little further. You said you put new equipment in and did other things. Did any of that equipment deal with odor or air quality?
Yes, it did. What we're doing is, we're taking the smoke and putting, the smoke that comes out of the, what I think is the baghouse, and I'm not an expert in asphalt plants, so bear with my explanation here.
You're doing all right.
But my understanding is that the smoke that normally is shot into the atmosphere from the asphalt plant is being funneled back into the plant where it will burn up. Okay? And at that point, there's a reduced emissions, reduced opacity, and it's almost a self-clean system at that point. They've also just constructed a dustbin, which prevents fugitive dust from flying into Mound House with the wind. So we are taking active steps, and I, and I mentioned this the last time I was in front of the Board of Supervisors, and I've mentioned this, and Mark Simms, my colleague, has mentioned this to the Planning Commission. We're taking active steps to address these issues, and we're continuing to do that because TWA wants to live in harmony with Mound House, if for no other reason that the complaints stop. And maybe the oversight is a little bit less, because the oversight is so onerous, it's stopping efficiency and effectiveness of the plant.
Okay, all right. I love these conundrums. Go, I'm sorry, Brad, I saw your light on, go.
Jeremy, I think I just heard you talk about basically a smoke incinerator. But it wasn't clear to me whether that is in the process of being approved and then will be installed, or if it's already been installed.
It's got to be approved before it's installed.
Do you have an estimated time for approval and installation?
We have to have our permit in front of the NDEP for approval within 90 days. We're working with a retired NDEP employee as a consultant to develop, create, and address the issues that have been identified by NDEP staff with the plant as we speak. So 90 days as of mid-May, within that timeframe, NDEP's going to have the revised application for permit that will propose all of the new pieces of equipment that Tahoe Western is installing.
And then the final item that I'd like to go back on is the argument that there's no jurisdiction across county boundaries. And I have some experience in groundwater contamination and NDEP enforcement actions. And I seem to remember a few cases where groundwater contam- And I seem to remember a few cases where groundwater contamination originated in one county and migrated over a county line into another county, and there was enforcement action against the originating county. So, that's probably an area that all of you probably want to look at. And specifically, in addition to just the groundwater contamination, I think there's, I also remember there's some phosphorus and nitrate contamination issues that cross county boundaries between Douglas and Carson and some out in central Nevada, where again, there have been enforcement actions against the originated county. That's it for me.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just ask Jeremy a quick question. Jeremy, you're talking about the, that new equipment's being proposed for consideration by NDEP. Now, I'm aware that TWA submitted photographs of equipment to NDEP in December. In January, NDEP asked for specifications, and they've yet to receive those specifications. Is it the December equipment we're talking about, or are we talking about different equipment?
There's been a number of pictures sent to NDEP with proposed equipment. So, those, the entire plant is being reworked in terms of its process for creating asphalt. I wish I could speak to it better, but like you hope, I'm not, not an expert in this. But all of the odor, opacity, and few mitigation efforts are being addressed in the revised application, which is due to the NDEP within 90 days.
Go.
Jeremy, can you tell me the permit with NDEP to change out the equipment? Is that a public process or an administrative process?
It's an administrative process.
And then, if I could just do one other follow-up, I thought I understood you to say that NDEP had both jurisdictional issues of odor and air quality. Are you saying that it falls in if the odor is noxious or harmful, and that's when it gets into it, or just odor in and of itself?
Well, and that's, the definition of odor is at issue here. You know, I mean, we've, the Carson City Code, since odors, it doesn't say objectionable odors, it doesn't say noxious odors, it doesn't describe what kind of odors they are. So you've got reds, old 395 grill, which creates odors, but generally, those smell really good. But does that violate the code? So, my understanding, a reasonable understanding, would be that those odors have to be noxious and/or highly objectionable to fall within the jurisdiction of governing agencies.
Thank you. Do we have a definition of odor?
We won't change the screen, since we have Jeremy on the screen, but finding B, again, we keep going back to finding B, when it's qualifying what noise, vibration, fumes, odors, dust, glare, so on and so forth, by saying it will not be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development surrounding properties or the general neighborhood, and is compatible with and preserves the character and integrity of adjacent development and neighborhoods, or includes improvements and modifications, so on and so forth. So if the odors are detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties or the general neighborhood, or the odors are not compatible with and do not preserve the character and integrity of adjacent development, neighborhoods, so on and so forth, so it sort of qualifies it. So if you had a rose garden, and I smelled your roses, that probably would not violate B. It's a pleasant smell, as opposed to an odor.
Unless I'm allergic to roses. Is that then detrimental?
Then you could say it's detrimental to the peaceful enjoyment, and then the Planning Commission might say you need to have a wall. But again, it would have to be a special use to have the findings.
Well, that may be why the language says general neighborhood too, and not one specific person.
And that's true, because as you know, the Planning Commission often has folks coming out in opposition to special use permits, and they need to, they need to weigh it and identify the mitigations. And a single person may have a complaint, but they're looking at a broader impact.
May I ask Jeremy another question? So Jeremy, what do you, what would TWA like to do over the next 90 days to mitigate, and however long after that it's going to take? Let's say we get lucky, and you're going to find this equipment that's really going to mitigate the odor. Let's, what do you do over the next 90, 180 days to mitigate this issue for those residents? If we, forego whether or not you want to agree about the jurisdiction, but you want to talk about the odor, you want to reduce the complaints, you, you just, you truly said that, I don't want these complaints. So the question really becomes, then do you operate the facility less during the six months so that you can impact them less and split the middle? What is your plan to eliminate or reduce these complaints over the next six months?
Well, one piece of equipment which has already been installed is, is what, is the dust collector bin, for lack of a better descriptive term. And, and this prevents, when you create and you make asphalt, it creates a very, very fine dust that gets blown into the atmosphere if it's not contained. That part of the plant was, to prevent any fugitive dust, was already fixed, and we didn't need NDEP approval to do that. So, to the extent that's the part that's causing the fumes, that part has been addressed. Again, you know, with COVID and how the economy's been hit, I hate to tell you that my client's going to operate less when I think his business is already slowing down significantly, just due to economic downturn. We are getting into summer, there are more construction jobs. I don't know that many of the roadwork jobs have been impacted yet by the economic downturn. But I can't tell you, in addition to the dustbin, exactly what will be done. That's, that's a tough question that I'm not prepared to answer.
What I'd like to do now is just take a 10-minute break, so everybody can use a restroom. We'll reconvene here at a set, dead, set time at 3:45. So, you guys over there on your shop, Jeremy, 3:45, we're up, okay? Thanks.[1101.71]
Okay, it's 3:45. We're gonna bring the meeting back to order. Jeremy, you back in? You back? Okay, you are. All right. All right. Anything further before you let Solomon take over us?
I have a couple of final statements if I may.
Sure, sure. I'm sorry. Go. You go.
And if I jump the gun, I apologize.
Hang on, hang on. You might want to listen to John's question first before you do. Okay. Go. Jeremy, go.
Okay. I just wanted to wrap up a couple of points here with respect to substantial evidence in the board's decision today. The first is that for all the complaints provided to the Planning Commission in 2019, there were 226 complaints made to the Planning Commission. Ninety-five percent of those were made by five people. We ran the numbers and they're independently verifiable. So, five people made ninety-five percent of the complaints. I just looked at the Mount House area again, and there's actually 387 residences in Mount House. Five people, two of which live in the same house, made ninety-five percent of the complaints out of 387 residences. That, to me, is not substantial evidence justifying the odors that are being alleged against TWA. That is a shred of evidence, if anything, if the board wants to consider complaints from outside of Carson City limits. You've got five complainers out of 387 residences making the complaints.
Do you know what, Jeremy? Hey, Jeremy. Let me ask you a question. You know if those complaints were done individually? Like, suppose I file a complaint because there's an odor problem. Nobody does anything. Three days later, I get the same odor. I call up and I file another complaint. What are you guys doing? Wait two weeks now. Nothing's been done. So they file another complaint. Is that what's going on, or is they just filing complaints willy-nilly?
That's exactly what... We think that they're filing complaints any time that they know TWA is operating or think they're operating, they file a complaint. And the residents are unfortunately going by the rule that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. As you can see, NDEP, according to Lyon County, received 458 complaints between January and April of this year. And that's an astronomical amount of complaints. And our data is showing that ninety-five percent of those are from five people. So, we've got a vendetta that should not be entertained by the board and does not amount to substantial evidence against TWA in terms of modifying its SUP, creating an arbitrary increases condition, which is going to put TWA in an ill-waited situation and ultimately cost TWA its business.
When are you gonna know if you've got a revised air quality permit from NDEP?
I'm not sure what their review time looks like, but I know that there are several people involved in the review. Like I said, my last couple of phone calls, I've had seven different staff members of NDEP on the phone. So, I would guess 180 days we'll know whether we've got a revised permit. And I would... We've got a revised permit for one, and then we, too, we've got the new equipment implemented. I mean, the purpose of implementing this equipment is to take care of any perceived odors. So, and that's the goal of what we're doing with NDEP, is revising the permit to accomplish that goal.
Yeah, go.
Jeremy, I have a follow-up on that. Has NDEP made any statement that they're going to require these additional equipment installations? Or is it a case of if Tahoe Western decided to leave the bargaining table and said, "You know what? We're not gonna add any more equipment"? Do they have the right and ability to do that?
That is not an option for TWA at this time to leave the bargaining table. If we leave the bargaining table, we leave our ability to operate under the permit.
Okay. Any other questions? Jeremy, you wanna add anything? Have you got any of these other questions? Give you some pause to answer again? Or...
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. All right. So let's take it back here to the board. Unless somebody's got something else. Yes, Ben.
I apologize. Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney for the record. If I may, I just wanted the opportunity to address some of the points that were made in rebuttal and make my final points before the board makes its decision, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
So, there's been this discussion, and I don't want to belabor the point or beat a dead horse, that the board has or does not have jurisdiction. I certainly haven't found any case law that says that just because the complaints are coming outside of the county that we can't address it. According to the appellant's attorney, they have legal recourse in Lyon County. They say they can bring it to the Lyon County Planning Commission, they can bring it to the Lyon County Board. But I believe that the fact that the Lyon County Board wrote a letter to this body is indicative of their inability to address the problem themselves. I think that if the Lyon Board of Commissioners, you know, had the authority to address the problem, they would have done it based on the statements in that letter in which they asked this body to consider the complaints that they're hearing. I think Supervisor Bonkowski and the mayor said previously where, you know, this kind of leaves them in a no man's land, where they're not subject to any kind of regulation. I don't see how Lyon County could possibly have jurisdiction over a Carson City business. They don't control the special use permit, they don't control the licensing, they can't revoke any kind of the permits. That's squarely within this body and the Planning Commission of Carson City's jurisdiction. Second, there's been some discussion about pieces of new equipment regarding dust and other odor control equipment that's being installed. I just want to point out that this information was never presented to the Planning Commission. So, when he says that there's already been equipment that's been installed to incinerate the dust or do dust controls, that's new information. And I don't think, under the code, the board should or could consider it because it wasn't first introduced at the Planning Commission level and the CCMC says that you can't consider information or evidence, excuse me, if it wasn't presented below. Finally, I want to clarify a point that Mr. Clark repeated several times, where it's only ninety-five percent of the complaints coming from five residents. It was just five residents who came forward at the Planning Commission meetings three times. As Hope said, there was more than five people each time. And they also presented a petition, Lyon County residents with addresses, that said that they have a problem. So, to keep repeating where there's only five people complaining and they have a vendetta, there's no evidence of any kind of vendetta, any kind of personal relationship or, you know, anything that would cause these residents to target TWA. So, you know, again, I don't think that that statement should be considered. Finally, their TWA requests a modified Condition 17 where they will use commercially available equipment for the purposes of odor mitigation. I think that if the board is inclined to adopt that, that it have some sort of requirement where they report back to the board or the Planning Commission with exactly what kind of equipment, you know, is being installed and how it specifically will address the issues involving odor. You know, as we've heard before, NDEP is more concerned with air quality. So, there's no way for us to know if this equipment being installed to control air quality to specifically address issues of odor. So with that, I'll, you know, submit to the board. Thank you.
All right. Since I gave, Jeremy, since I gave Ben a shot, you should have a shot, too. You want to address that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Sullivan indicated that 17 people showed up to the November meeting and made verbal complaints. Even if the board considers that information, which I'm not, I can't substantiate independently, but that's four percent of the 378 homes in Mount House. So you've got four percent, probably less because you may have people living in the same residence. But you've got 378 residences and 17 people who showed up to the meeting. That's four percent. So again, I would say that that is not substantial evidence supporting the Planning Commission's findings. In addition, we've received numerous complaints directly before and after meetings in Carson City from the Mount House residents that they really don't like Robert Matthews, the owner. They don't think he's a nice person. And so we have very good reason to believe, including the number of all complaints that we've verified and spoke about a number of times at the Planning Commission level, that substantiate the vendetta. And a sheer number of complaints substantiates it. So, that would be my response to Mr. Johnson's comments. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Hang on a minute. We gotta change a microphone out here. Mine's going, too. Oh, it's got the... Hang on a minute, everybody who's on this line here. We gotta change out some microphones here because we're running out of batteries. So, I need one here, too. So, the battery's gone. Give me one of Gomi's. By the way, I should say, while we're talking about, while I mentioned Supervisor Gomi, he's not here. He had a firm commitment to be out of town at noon today. So he was excused for this afternoon. We'll work on him later.
So, TWA gets his vote?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, and it's in the record. Two Planning Commissioners independently smelled the asphalt off-site. That was then Chairman Sattler and Commissioner Preston. Thank you.
Okay. It's one of the hardest decisions we've had. There's complex issues involved. All right. Somebody want to start the ball? Brad, you want to start it? We'll see where we go.
I think John has questions.
John has a question.
I just wanted to ask Hope to refresh my memory on what, in this context, the word "special needs" in special use permit.
I'm going back to the definition for you from the municipal code, which defines a special use permit as a specific discretionary approval for a use which has been determined to have a unique circumstances, be more intense, or to have a potentially greater impact than a permitted use within the same zoning district.
I thought that's what you said earlier. It's discretionary. And what does that say about you can add conditions later? The conditions at the beginning didn't have odor, and the condition of odor was brought in subsequently. And so that was part of the special, part of it that became conditional.
Close. When you consider a special use permit, you have seven findings of fact. The Planning Commission must make each of the seven findings in the affirmative. When the applicant came forward in 2018 to amend the special use permit, the Planning Commission, with any amendment of a special use permit, revisits those seven required findings of fact. Having received testimony regarding odors, the Commission added a condition relative to odors in the hopes of addressing odors specifically in response to finding B.
Thank you.
One other question of you, Jamie. Is it Jamie or Jeremy?
Jeremy.
Jeremy. I got Jamie on my brain here. Will the equipment that you're putting in, you've got 90 days from mid-May to put that in, right, for NDEP? Will that solve the odor issue?
Sir, we have 90 days to submit our revised air quality permit application, which is going to include the plans to address air quality and odor complaints. So, TWA is moving forward to address the odor complaints that NDEP addresses with TWA on a weekly basis.
Has NDEP given you any suggestions about what type of equipment you should have? You should acquire?
Like the Planning Commission's new position that they don't want to tell TWA what equipment is required, NDEP's been consistent, and they are not asphalt plant builders. But what they will do is take their proposed equipment and run modeling. They will essentially recreate the plant with their computer modeling. And...
Hang on, hang on. We've exceeded the time. The lawyers have been talking too long. Hang on just a second. Can you push "O" on the screen?
Desi needs to do the WebEx extension.
Desi? Hang on a minute. What is it saying here, Jeremy? So you know, it's a... There we go. Trying to say the call is ended. We'll get it back up.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it cut off. Y'all have to call back in. I've done a lot of these. It's always taken like 12 hours, just so you know.
Do we need everybody to sign back on? Who's... Who do we have on? Pardon me?
Ben and Jeremy.
Okay.
No, he just extended it. Yeah. He can hit the extension. Point's immediate, too, if you don't get it extended.
This is hard. This is really hard to do meetings virtually and then have one drop off in the middle. That's really hard. The what?
Interest of time. Should we just have them all again?
Let's see what he's doing. How much time is it gonna be? I don't know. This, let's see. It'd be nice to get him back on the screen so we know what we're doing. I don't know if they can... Can anybody on this call hear me talking right now?
Enter the event panelist's numerical password.
Remake a new WebEx session. A practice... He's doing all these now.
We should be back live, Mr. Mayor. Jeremy, Ben, can you hear us?
All right. We got it. Okay.
Audio is in and out for me.
Who says audio is in?
Ben, can you hear us?
Can you hear us now, Jeremy?
This is Ben. I can hear you.
Oh, Ben can hear us. How about, there he is.
All right, back online. Okay. Supervisor Bonkowski's gonna go Seriatim on the conditions. We're gonna try that, see if we can, what we can come up with. So, Brad, you want to take off here?
Yes. First, another procedural issue, I believe, for you, Dan. Item number one, which was already previously removed from the SUP as a condition, and the request is to remove it. So we would not take an action to uphold or deny the appeal on that item? Is that correct?
I think that's correct. And I think as a matter of the record, it might be nice if the board asked for Mr. Clark to confirm that he's agreeable to that as well. I mean, you know, as a matter of practicality, it is a moot issue as far as I'm concerned. But if Mr. Clark would note that on the record, he's agreeable, I think that would be a good thing for the record.
Brad, I didn't hear the first part of your question there.
Item number one has already been removed as a condition of the SUP, and the request is to remove it. So it shouldn't require an action. So Jeremy, can you confirm on the record that item one has been removed and that we do not need to take an action to uphold or deny the appeal?
I apologize. I don't have item number one in front of me. Can you...
Yes.
Please read that to me?
Remove the November 20...
Actually, maybe I do. Does that say regenerative thermal oxidizer?
No, no. It says remove...
This meeting February 26, 2021?
Oh, yes, it is. Remove the November 20, 2019 condition regarding a regenerative thermal oxidizer.
Yes, I'll confirm that can come off.
Thank you. Then I'd like to move item number two to the final item after item number six. On item number three, I move to deny the appeal, which is, I'll read the item into the record. Item number three, remove the requirement for code enforcement monitoring. I move to deny the appeal.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Do we have discussion?
Yeah, we're going to discuss right now.
So, sorry. So the discussion on that item, I think, really links to what we're going to do. Because is this one that says he's going to go to Laan County three times a month, and he's going to smell whether or not there's... Is that what the enforcement is? Code enforcement action? Is going three times a month to the housing development and determining whether or not there is a smell? And then he brings it back to the planning commission if he has three strikes?
Correct. What they're referring to is condition number 19 on page 612 of the packet.
So just on discussion that we're sure what we're doing. And I think that's kind of linked maybe to the other...
It's linked to what?
And what we're going to do with the other two. Of what is he monitoring? What is code enforcement monitoring? What are we asking him to do? Just go there and see if they smell anything and make a report back to the planning commission?
Well, I think you have to go back to the planning commission minutes, right? It's all spelled out in the, in the planning commission.
Just as a reminder to the board, this condition was because the planning commission will be doing an annual review in October 2020, and the commission wanted to have objective data from the code enforcement officers on what their observations were. So this was put in there in part for that and also in part for enforcement of condition 17. But it was not exclusively for condition 17.
Okay. You okay with that?
The discussion point is if we want to do a modification to this one about the log for the October 2020 meeting, which I think is perfectly acceptable. Do you want that, for instance, if they got complaints the next three days, code enforcement goes out, that means, if I read this, they will immediately send that to the planning commission for review of their special use permit? So in three days from now, code enforcement will then schedule the next monthly meeting at the planning commission for revocation of their permit, unless I'm misreading this condition?
What the condition says is, in part, is that if code enforcement has three observations, then this item will be, the special use review would be scheduled for the next available planning commission meeting. So you're correct. It does say that in part.
So I just, I just want to make sure that... Don't know what we're doing on the other items yet, whether that makes sense for the second half of the sentence. The first half makes complete sense if, to create the log and to start understanding what's going on out there and to give those residents, you know, like you said, that our code enforcement can go find out and create the log.
So do you have a suggestion of amendment or modification?
I, I need to know where we're going to go on item two to know what the answer is for this item. Because if we're going to grant them some time to come to compliance with NDEP with a piece of equipment, then I would be on number two. If we're just going to add no odors effective such and such a date, then I would modify that that enforcement action corresponds with that date. That, that's when that monitoring would begin. Because otherwise, I read this to say, could be today that code enforcement's already gone out there. If that makes sense, what I'm trying to say.
It could be tomorrow. I'd just say we should line them up.
Whatever we're going to do, we need to align them.
So are you saying you want to hear number, item number two first?
Yes. That's the...
Yes, that's the whole issue in reality.
That's why I wanted to save it for last.
How about second to last?
I was going to pick, I was going to pick the low hanging fruit first, but we'll go back...
How about second to last?
I'll withdraw my motion if the second or will withdraw their second, and we'll just go in numeric order. All right. I'm not prepared to make a motion on item number two if somebody else wants to try that one.
Read that into the record so people know what you're talking about. Number two.
Item number two is remove the requirement that odors are not detectable beyond the property line.
Okay.
I think the first thing we should do is even, does anyone believe that the plant... I'll just be playing. Does anyone believe that the plant can operate with no... The word detectable is what bothers me. So that they can have no detectable odors. To me, that's pleasant, not pleasant, doesn't matter what it is. It says no detectable. So are you saying that we should just uphold this? Which means, again, I drive through there, I get a whiff, it's done. Or should we put a condition, modify it to indicate that they have... I'm just talking ideas. I don't have a motion yet. They have 180 days to install whatever the equipment is that they get their contract with, or permit with NDEP. And we would start the clock running. And if we get a 30-minute sustained odor, detrimental odor, something, we have to come up with a definition for the odor, then three of those, and it would go back to the planning commission. That's what I meant by trying to link these up so it makes sense and so that TWA knows what they're going to be, what standard they're going to be held to. Under what condition is your permit up for review? And potentially, the answer is it would be revoked, correct? Unless I'm just being naive here. But is that not what you see? The meaning of this is it'd go back to the planning commission? They could re-modify them, or they'll revoke their permit?
Or you could do, I mean, just talking out loud. I mean, this is off the top of my head. You could, you could say that, you know, we're going to uphold the planning commission's decision on item number two, make the change that you suggested, the word change on that, and then we're going to revisit this in 90 days, the same time or next, nearly the same time that they're going to be back in front of NDEP with their approval to modify their permit.
We could make that...
What, Bob? I think we could then do what I may be suggesting in number three to take the back half off and start it with the NDEP that the monitoring will begin and uphold number two. I agree with you that we might be able to do that exactly. Because the objective is to get them to keep the odors on their own property.
Well, I don't think that we can uphold number two if we're going to modify it. It's a modification. It's not...
I said uphold number two.
That's what I said.
Condition, the other one.
You said uphold number two.
And, and modify number three.
Right, but I'm talking about number two. How do you uphold number two if you're modifying it?
I'm not. I said uphold number two.
You could say it uphold the planning commission's decision on two.
And then what I was suggesting is in number three...
Well, hang on. Let's stick to number two.
Okay.
Because I'm still not following. You said to modify it because you didn't like the language that odors couldn't be detectable.
Oh, oh.
No, no. I'm saying, we could decide. I'm saying uphold that you don't want it going outside the property line, but the only modification is that it has to be detrimental instead of just the word odor, if you want to add. Or do you think it's assumed?
So Brad, how do you want to see this come out?
Well, on number two, I just, I'm not happy with the language. I don't think that it's reasonable to say that you can have no odors, no detectable odors beyond the property line. So what I'm trying to search for is some reasonable language that says that if there are objectionable odors, that we can take action, but not say that absolutely no odors can be detectable, be detected beyond the property line.
Like the 30 minutes of continuous...
Which is why I wanted to go to this last.
I got what you're saying. Continuous negative odor or something.
I'm struggling too to find that out. John, what do you say? Supervisor Barrett?
I say that words are tools, and if you want to do it right, you want to make sure there are no trap doors or ways to get around them. So detectable may be a little strong, but discernible for 20 minutes? I don't know.
My two senses this is that we're going to get, we're going to wordsmith it to death if we do. And I agree that there's problems with, with the lang...
That's true.
I get what Brad's saying, and I get what the appellant is saying. My sense is, is that if we're going to go down that road, we ought to, we ought to uphold the planning commission's decision on this matter and bring it back to this board when they bring back their permit to, when they bring back their application for a permit from NDEP. That way, that would be middle of, they would be living with these restrictions through whenever that happened. Have to, then...
Because thank you, Mr. Mayor, for using me as a foil so that you could make that point. I think you're right.
I also agree with you.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's the idea is to, and don't get this wrong, you guys, or everybody on the phone, everywhere. Not trying to be penalized, but I think, you know, we've been dealing with this for two years, and everybody says they're going to do something to solve it, to solve it, solve it, whether it's the appellate, the appellant, or anybody else, and it never gets done. So what I'm just suggesting is uphold the planning commission's decision on number two, bring it back here. It will reconsider that, that action when we see what that, what, what they bring in front of NDEP. And maybe that's going to solve the issue. Maybe they're going to have all the air, the odors solved.
So let me ask you a question. Are you saying uphold it, but defer it until 880 days of past?
I say it uphold the planning commission until, until they have, till they file their, their request with NDEP. And then that request goes away. We'll revisit what, what, what we've done here today on item number two, which could mean that, you know, they fixed it all through NDEP, including the odor side of it. And it's not too long down the road, so the people don't think we're just dragging it out. And it's not a financial incentive, financial inhibitor to the, to Towah Western because they don't have to put any money in until they see what NDEP is going to do. And we're going to say, you know, we don't want odors going across there. And we'll see what happens when you file with NDEP. That's all I could, I don't, otherwise, you know, I don't know what else you do.
You're being a good Solomon.
Okay.
I think Jeremy wants to say something, but at this point, we're in deliberations, right?
Yeah, but I think it's going to debate whether I should ask him. Jeremy, we're in debate. We usually don't, he's, we usually don't take, you know, this is Solomon time, but talk to us, you know, go ahead. I mean, we're trying to get this thing solved, and we usually don't do this, but have at it.
And I'm not trying to influence the board at this point. I'm just trying to get clarification on, so I can tell TWA really what the order's going to be. It sounds like what you're saying is that you want to uphold the planning commission with respect to number two, but stay enforcement of number two pending the application with NDEP. Is that accurate?
And that's a modification because we're going to stay the order.
No, I think what, what we're saying here is that, is that we're going to, we're going to uphold... I mean, we are. That's not, I don't have any reason to believe that, that statement here. But the idea is, is that we're going to uphold the planning commission on item number two, and then we will revisit it when, and if everything goes the same as enforcement, everything else. But we know that you're going to be coming back here when you file with NDEP your revised plan for what you're going to do. That would be 90 days from the middle of May.
Okay, and then at that point, we could suggest different language with respect to that condition?
But the orders have got to go away. Somehow, we got to get these, we got to get that resolved. And I, and I hope you're not, just go to NDEP and say, you know, fix the air quality, forget, forget odors. And that's not going to get us anywhere. I mean, and I, and I understand your distinction between the two. That's all I'm suggesting.
So we can use a staff directive after we go through the remaining five items to...
Sure.
Direct staff to bring this back in front of us once the application's been filed with NDEP?
Sure. I see, Dan, you saying he's got his... You don't like that, Dan?
Yeah, and I, you know, I think, well, let me make my comment on the record, and I'll ask Lee, you know, and hope to maybe chime in on this to see if there's any disagreement. I want to make sure we have a consensus here. My understanding, as far as timing goes, is that we're at a point in time where this board is making a quote unquote "final" decision. And that's because this matter was remanded once before down to planning, and that was, of course, you know, with the agreement of the appellant, TWA. Now that we're back, you know, we're, I think we're sort of at that wall now in terms of the ordinance deadline that's imposed. So I, I think if, if the condition or the modification, and I do view it as a little bit of modification, which is, you know, we're going to maintain that condition as it is, status quo, no change to the language, but we're going to ask staff to bring it back for the board's consideration.
So we're asking them to bring it back. I want to know what they're doing.
Right, right. So I, I kind of view that as...
That's, that's just an evidentiary hearing. What are you doing?
Right. I...
Because if they come back and they say, well, we don't have any decision yet, well, section two stays.
Okay. If, if it's, if it's in terms of an update, I have no objections or concerns.
All I'm asking for.
I, I, I just...
So I think we got to be fair to both sides here. I mean, I understand that they've got plans to, to try and resolve some of this problem. We've been through this once before, but maybe we go through it again on a shorter timeframe. That's why I'm suggesting we live with the 90 days from the beginning of, middle of May. And we'd have to put a date certain on that.
Right. And, and, you know, again, I don't mean to be splitting hairs here, Mayor, but, but again, I would ask for, you know, just to make, you know, the procedures nice and crisp. You know, if counsel for TBA, TWA would be agreeable to, to a return, you know, even for just a submission of an update.
You want me to ask it right now if it's agreeable to that?
Yes.
So before we go to that, if I could, so the way I understand the procedure is that we're proposing denying the appeal on item two, asking the appellant to come back with an update on their NDEP application approximately the end of August, which would then be followed up with the planning commission review in October.
That's exactly what I was going to bring up, was the planning commission review in October. And what I, I hear the discussion being is the mayor is saying, okay, the planning came up with a performance standard based on substantial evidence. They're about to design a new plant and bring in new equipment. So now you know what your performance standard is. Have the equipment meet that and report out to us that you did it. Now, whether they report out to you at a meeting, whether it's through staff, whether it's at the October planning commission, I think that's a formality that doesn't need to necessarily be in a motion. We could, we're certainly going to follow up with them. But what I'm hearing from the board is discussion about affirming the performance standard, recognizing they're about to purchase new equipment so that they can purchase new equipment accordingly.
Yeah, my preference would be that the, that the update be at a board of supervisors meeting so that it's on public record.
Absolutely.
Because we, number one, we want to know, and, and number two, if the answer at the end of August, or whatever the date certain is, is nothing has happened, then I, I think that we need to know that.
Jeremy, let me ask you, you follow this, I know it's hard to do that when you're on the TV camera here. Do you wanna weigh in on whether you agree with that or disagree, or you got any suggestions, or just tell us to go away?
I won't say that, sir, uh, but I did lose, uh, the end of hope comments and the beginning of last supervisor's, uh, comments, but, uh, what I think I gather is that, you know, again, what, what the board wants is to make sure that NDEP, or I'm sorry, that Tahoe Western is continually moving forward to address the odor issues, okay? And as an enforcement mechanism, it wants to bring Tahoe Western back, uh, on a public record to ensure that that's happening, and the performance standard would be that it has submitted its application, uh, to NDEP from ninety days, uh, from mid-May, uh, and we will develop a date certain. Uh, and I don't object to that plan. The objection that I would have is keeping in the condition that says odors can't leave the property line. Um, as a couple of the, uh, supervisors have mentioned, that's a condition that seems unreasonable, and that is, uh, depending on the day and the wind blowing, uh, you know, is ripe for, uh, causing a violation with the planning commission and code enforcement that, uh, that we're addressing. So, uh, I, I would ask that condition, uh, be denied, uh, or our appeal upheld on that front, and that we be, uh, the, that condition to be modified to have Tahoe Western come back and report on its application, uh, to staff and/or the board.
Okay, well, there's a difference of opinion there, but I mean, we're all talking five or six months here between today and whenever. It might, I'll tell you, my sense is, if we're gonna go down this road that you can't have odors, I mean, that you object to having the standard that you can't have odors leave the perimeter, perimeter of the property, that's probably something we're gonna have to have a judge decide. It's my own two senses. I, I know we're all trying to stay out of court and everything, and that's a great idea, but I don't know that we're gonna solve that here. I mean, I'm getting two conflicting opinions, yours and our own DA down here says you can do this. The only way I know to solve that is to head to court and get a trial fact to say, you know, you're all wet, board of supervisors and planning commission. But, so, you know, I'm just trying to find a way, you know, to, to keep, to keep the thing moving, 'cause I don't, when I asked, when I opened the hearing up here, I said, yeah, we got all these complaints, but I thought, you know, when the last time we had this, there was gonna be equipment installed, it was gonna stop odors, and it was gonna be resolved, but it's not, it's a year later. And so all I'm trying to do is say, you know, fisher cut bait is probably the best way to go up or down on two, but just in order to try and give some people some, a little bit of latitude and keep the ball moving, that's why I suggested, you know, uphold number two, and say we're gonna get an update when you go back to, to NDEP, from you. And then if it looks like NDEP, and, and we, you know, our folks agree that this is gonna ameliorate the odor issue, we'll take, we'll take action then to fix number two.
You don't need to fix number two if the equipment eliminates the odor.
Well, that's what I say.
Then number two still can stand.
Well, number two goes away, though. We fixed...
What for?
Because they'll have equipment in there that was designed to do that.
But then it meets it. The equipment meets it.
What I'm saying is that there would be no detectable odors.
Right. There'll be no det, it, it's a moot point, if the equipment does what it's supposed to do, which is eliminate odors.
That's right, you don't have, well, you don't have to have number two.
Well, I would disagree with that. It's not a moot point, because it can come back, the equipment may fail, whatever, so...
That's what I said, you don't ever remove it. That's my point.
Okay, okay, I see.
That is the point.
I, I thought you were talking the other way around.
No, I'm saying, coming back in nine, I don't understand the come back in ninety days with their equipment. If you're leaving number two, it's there, forever.
They don't have the equipment in ninety days.
Or, whatever it comes, it's there, it sits.
Well, at the end of the day... At the end of the day, we're here to solve a problem. And, you know, we could finesse certain things on time and stuff like that, uh, but at the end of, we need to give something where people can feel comfortable that, one, this problem's gonna get solved, it's not gonna put Tahoe Western out of business and, and go down that road. I mean, we're not trying to put anybody out of business. And by the way, when I say that, let me tell you, when, when the comment is made that we buy asphalt from Tahoe Western, and therefore we have a conflict, absolutely not. If, if we're making decisions based upon who does business with us, we oughta have our hands slapped. We don't do it. And if I find out about it, I'll slap two hands. Okay? All right, let's try the motion again. I'd entertain a motion that says, I'd entertain a motion that says, we're gonna keep, we're gonna uphold the planning commission's decision on item number two, uh, period, and then we're gonna ask, uh, that they come back as an update, uh, when they file their request with NDEP, and, uh, we may or may not revisit what number two says, depending on what happens there.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second for discussion.
Discussion's over.
I think that you leave number two as, I don't like the word "not detectable," because I, Bob, how do you, how do you uphold that?
I don't mind putting "detectable" in there. I mean, I, you gotta make sure that, is that a substantive change?
So is that, again, I just smelled it, that, I, I just...
Well...
I'm telling you, you have a bunch of complainers out there, and I'm not faulting them.
So what would you say?
I'm just saying that the permit's gonna be revoked. I'm telling you, this is going to the planning commission next month, and this will be revoked. And if we're prepared for that, I'm okay today with what you're saying, because the other conditions are going to have it be revoked, unless we fix number three and take off the back half of the sentence and give them the time, and then maybe this can all work.
Say that again.
Maybe if we look again at what, let's see, is that nineteen?
Supervisor Bagwell, on seventeen, I think you are looking for a timeframe, and the word you may want is sustained odors.
This one, this one is again, Hope?
Sustained odors.
Sustained odor?
Instead of a, again, I don't want somebody calling up, I can smell it.
All right. I guess, you know, to, to solve that problem, we could say that we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, hold off on enforcement until the end of the ninety days.
Yes. I could live with it then. And I could live with that.
But that doesn't preclude, that doesn't preclude the citizens out there from telling us, hey, we're still getting, we're still getting...
Correct, and he can log it.
But we have an answer that says, you know, we're gonna see, you know, it's on the, it's on the edge right now.
Right. I could live with that.
The special use permit is on the edge right now.
Yes.
And what I'm just trying to solve is...
Yes.
Okay.
I want TWA to have an opportunity to cure at NDEP.
All right.
What I don't want is the permit revoked in one month from now at the planning commission, and they could've solved this with their equipment at NDEP, but we didn't give them the opportunity because of the monitoring. So if we adjust number three's condition on the monitoring, then I think the rest can stand.
The, the flip side of that is, there has to be a, a date in cer, certain by which, a drop dead date, that action has to be taken.
I agree with that.
Because otherwise, a year from now and two years from now, we'll be back here talking about this issue.
Oh, no. I hundred percent agree with you that we work out the date specific, that that monitoring by code enforcement would occur to be able to go back and revoke a permit. I agree with you on that. So how much, so the first report would be in ninety days? With that, here's the equipment, and then what's the install date? And then we...
We, we can't, you're on mute. So, you're on mute.
Thank you. Our permit application is due August eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty.
August what?
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
Okay.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Of this year.
Okay.
But that doesn't address the drop dead date.
Right.
Well, the drop dead date would be, you know, if...
Then it would be up for revision.
Review at the October Planning Commission.
Right, correct.
And that would fall correctly then, and that gives TWA, your last shot at this is to be successful at the October Planning Commission, and if you're not, I'm so sorry, but we've done all we can for you.
All right, all right, I can agree to that.
Okay.
All right. John?
Nada.
Nada? Okay.
Nada.
We made a motion, do you wanna amend that motion?
You made the motion.
I made it, you wanna amend it?
Uh, yes, I would offer a friendly amendment to the motion to make the requirement that TWA come back for their review update, uh, the week between August nineteenth and, or it be twenty-sixth. That's the seven days following the submission date for the application.
Our second meeting in August is... Who's got a calendar? Who's the board?
August twentieth?
Twentieth, okay.
August twentieth?
Yeah, so it'd be August twentieth.
Just for clarification, are you modifying condition nineteen found on page six twelve to incorporate language that the applicant, or the appellate needs to present an update to the board regarding the NDEP permit at the board, second board meeting in August, August twentieth, that was it?
Um...
Are you incorporating that into nineteen?
Into nineteen.
On page six twelve?
Yes.
Yes, and, and taking away the, yes, that's a part of a modification to number nineteen on page six twelve.
So does the, the sentence that starts "not withstanding" to the end of that condition go away?
Well, isn't that on number three?
That's what we're replacing, that's, that's what we're gonna work to replace.
Isn't that on number three, though?
It's the number three in the one, but it's condition nineteen in the actual order.
Right, but we're on item two, so we would get to that in item three, right?
Right. Two is just gonna, two we're upholding.
Yes.
Three is where we're making the modification to how we would exercise...
So we're still, we're still working on a, a friendly amendment to the motion. We are not proposing adding the word "sustained" for sustained odors.
No. We need something, what do you wanna do for the time?
All right, well, no, I'm asking a question.
You got an idea?
For the record, Lee Plumm, Community Development, I just wanna weigh in on behalf of code enforcement on this. I think "detectable" was a very deliberate term because that, because it's objective. I, I smell, I smell asphalt, oh, do you smell asphalt? We smell asphalt, that's detectable. Is it objectionable? Not to me, maybe to, maybe to her. I think, I think that's, that's a bit problematic. So I think "detectable" was, you know, one of them says "detectable" in Mount House, one of them says "detectable" at the property line. I think that's as objective as you can get for smelling odor without going to the state reg where you dilute it and use a monitor.
So you're saying the word asphalt?
Let me, let me continue with this, since I'm still trying to come up with the modified motion. We also discussed, um, delaying any enforcement until now, what would be after the second meeting of August. So if we do that, then we don't need to change any of the wording in item two.
Correct.
So my friendly amendment to the motion made by the mayor is that we would, uh, require TWA to bring us a review of the NDEP application at the second meeting in August. I believe that's the only language that we would need to, to change.
Question? And does, does that include...
Hang on, is there a second to that motion, so we can talk about it?
So let's make sure we understand it.
I'll second it, so I can talk about it.
Second for discussion, that's...
And, and, and does that include their plans, as whether, as to whether they will follow the NDEP recommendations, since, since NDEP doesn't wanna force them to do anything anyway?
My understanding is that they have to submit the application on August eighteenth, but we're going to be following that up with the planning commission hearing in October, and if there isn't progress at that point, then I am suspicious that the planning commission would start revocation proceedings.
Thank you.
So just for a point of clarification, so seventeen you're suggesting will read, "The operation of the facility shall require that odors are not detectable beyond the property line. The applicant shall share their NDEP license or permit information at the August twentieth board of supervisors meeting." That's what condition seventeen becomes?
Say that again.
What do I do on that?
Read it again.
I just made all that up. I thought it was pretty good.
No.
You can read it, Tamar, can you read that right back? Oh, you can't do that. So when I'm looking at seventeen, it's, "The operation of the facility shall require that odors are not detectable beyond the property line." Then we'll add, um, we can say either TWA or the applicant will, um, report their NDEP permit information at the August twentieth board of supervisors meeting.
One suggestion, I think that's appellate at this stage.
Appellant, whichever, whichever the legalese, I can let, uh, the lawyers put the legal word in there, whether I say TWA is the applicant, or the appellate, or we can put their name in there. Does that work, everyone?
Yeah, I'm fine with that language.
Say again?
I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with the friendly amendment to the friendly amendment.
Okay. I'm having trouble hearing in here this room and all this stuff, man. It's sad. All right.
We need a continuation of the second still.
Yeah. All right.
Am I the second here?
You are.
Are we clear on what the motion is? Are we clear on what the motion is? You clear?
I am.
Hope?
I, yes, but we're only talking about seventeen, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
We're, we're getting to nineteen.
Yeah.
We'll get that. All right. On the motion, we ready? So when Solomon has to act. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Carried, okay.
Okay, moving on to item or request number three, which is condition number nineteen. I move to deny the, uh, the appeal. Oh, no, we don't, we don't, we need to modify the language.
We need to, we're gonna modify this one.
Okay. So if we're just gonna modify the language, then we're going to, we're not gonna remove the requirement...
Can't we just take off the words "not withstanding"?
Hmm?
Can we take off the words "just not withstanding," and it automatically is going to the October twenty twenty with the log? So the whole objective there is, this will come to the planning commission in twenty twenty. You either have done what you need to do to eliminate the odors, or you haven't. It's done. So October twenty twenty.
You're saying delete the entire last line?
Yeah, where it starts with "not withstanding," mhm.
Right.
Schedule for the next available. He'll, they'll still do the monitoring, though, and create the logs, so that we have the record for the October twenty twenty.
Because it's still coming back to the October twenty twenty meeting.
Yes, oh, yes, absolutely coming, so that those residents, if they install equipment and did all that, and they said, didn't work, you did, or you didn't live up to it, or you stalled it at NDEP, whatever, there, doesn't matter to me, October twenty twenty, they will be before the planning commission with the log.
Let me take a stab at this, then. On item number three, condition nineteen, I move to deny the appeal and to modify condition nineteen to read, "City code enforcement staff will monitor off-site odors a minimum of three times a month and maintain a detailed log. The log will be presented to the planning commission at its October twenty twenty meeting, period." Deleting the last sentence.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Carried. All right, next one.
On item number four, I move to deny the appeal.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor...
Do you want on the record why?
You want to put-
Just for on the record why, is because, again, they're going to be presenting a plan to NDEP with all the equipment to meet the needs of odor and air quality. This board's not determining what those pieces of equipment are, so force not needed.
Got that? All right. All right. So, we got a motion there. You got your statement on the record, right? Okay. Next one?
We need a vote.
We needed the vote.
Oh, on the vote, yeah. I thought I voted already.
Nope.
It's getting long. I'm getting long in the tooth, guys. Okay. On the motion, I don't, any further discussion? I don't see any. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Okay. That's done.
On item five, I move to deny the appeal, because this is a standard condition of, is it, it's all building permits, isn't it? Yeah, of all building permits.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, discussion. Okay. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Carried. Okay.
And finally, on item number six, which is condition, which condition is it, Hope? 13? Yes, 13. I move to deny the appeal.
All right. You want to put on the record what we're denying there, read the language.
Item number six is to allow the facility, allow the facility to operate at night and on Sundays up to 30 times per calendar year.
All right. So, the motion is to deny that part of the appeal. Okay. On the motion, any further discussion?
Just for discussion sakes, but number six could be revisited at the October 2020 Planning Commission. They could consider whether or not to remove that if they found all the equipment to be successful.
Number six being condition 13.
Right. Right. I just want to put that on the record for the applicant. It's, it could come back in October 2020 and find that all the equipment worked, and there's no more odors, then you can ask to have your operating hours back.
Okay. All right. We done?
We need to vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
We have to keep voting.
On the motion, further discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Carried. Okay. All right. Anything else to come before us on this issue? Anybody? Jeremy? Okay. All right.
Second.
Sure. All right. I don't know Solomon, what Solomon did today.
He worked hard.
Well, Solomon worked hard. Okay. That completes this item. We did board reports this morning.
Final.
Huh?
We need a final public comment.
We're gonna do final public comment now. So, Jeremy, you want to get in on final public comment? You can tell us to, you could, now's the freedom to say, you know, buzz off, guys, so.
No, thanks. Thanks for considering our appeal, and we look forward to seeing you again in August and the planning commission in October.
Good. Well said. Well done. Good lawyer.
Don't let us down, Jeremy.
Good lawyer.
I will.
All right. Anything else? Anybody in the public comment? Anybody? Desi, is anybody on the line?
There is no final public comment, Mr. Mayor.
There is, there is somebody?
There is none.
There is not. Okay. Board, are we ready to adjourn for the day, then? Okay, without objection, we stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors.